Good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, July 26, 2021. The time is 1:02 PM and a quorum is present. Before we begin our regular agenda, we will have a special presentation by Claire Newman of the Trust for Governors Island.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Claire Newman, President and CEO of the Trust for Governors Island. Thank you all for inviting us back to provide an update on the proposed Center for Climate Solutions on Governors Island. We're deeply grateful for your time and thoughtful review, really, across the past year, and look forward to today's discussion on our recently released Anchor Educational and Research Institution, RFEI. Next slide, please. As we've been discussing, the Mayor's Office and our goal is to create a truly cross-sector hub for educators, researchers, innovators, and advocates on Governors Island, doing work that will help equitably prepare New York City for climate change. The events of the past weeks are a reminder as to the urgency of this effort. Critically, this center can help ready neighborhoods across the five boroughs for climate change by focusing on issues of urban adaptation. It can grow well-paying green jobs, and anticipated 7,000 jobs on the island itself, with the potential for this work to spur many more across the city, and assist the city's broader ambitions in green job and business growth, and creates space for public awareness and dialogue accessible to all. Next slide. What this looks like on the island is a mix of uses consistent with the years of planning that have gone into the island, as well as the deed from the federal government. As you can see here, that includes the potential for dorm and faculty housing, convening and hospitality, commercial space, and living lab and cultural space, amongst others. However, all of that begins with attracting an educational or nonprofit research partner to conduct work in the climate field, right in the heart of New York Harbor on Governors Island, and to create the educational space we've contemplated. To that end, in late June, we, in the partnership with the Mayor's Office, released an RFEI focused on this first step. Next slide, please. Over the course of the past couple of years, we've conducted extensive research on this concept, the big-picture concept of Climate Center on Governors Island, and speaking with climate and educational experts across the city and country. In addition, we convened and expanded our Community Advisory Council for sessions focused on RFEI goal-setting, including representatives from our elected officials' offices, the Community Board, island partners, citywide policy organizations, workforce development organizations, arts and cultural organizations, et cetera. Based on that research and the work in our pack, we have established three main goals for the RFEI, which I'll now run through in detail. Goal number one is here on this slide: Equitable Climate Solutions. Advances actionable solutions for cities around the world, prioritizes equity and climate justice, and engages with one or more of the priority focus areas. You all may recall that one of the areas that was revealed in our research is the critical need to approach these climate issues through an interdisciplinary approach, bringing natural sciences alongside social sciences, policy, the arts, et cetera. So, we've highlighted that in the RFEI and strongly encouraged a focus area on climate adaptation. Of course, issues of mitigation are also welcome. Urban environments, particularly dense coastal urban environments, i.e. New York City. Climate action, and then intersections between resilience and public health. And this was something that was really informed during the pandemic and the work the city did on the broader recovery efforts. A requirement to embed issues of environmental and climate justice in everything that's being proposed, and to really center that on the work that has happened in New York City across many years and decades prior to this effort, of course, and then asking folks to speak to how their efforts could lead to commercialization and solution-oriented results, i.e. how can the center help create things that will embed back into the urban environment in New York City across our zip codes immediately? Next, please. Goal two is focused on Governors Island, and we ask that folks make a positive contribution to the island's physical campus, existing community of users, tenants, and partners, and financial sustainability. We worked in close partnership with the Department of City Planning, thank you, Chair Lago and your team, to come up with ambitious design guidelines that particularly focus on resiliency and sustainability, the relationship of the architecture and urban design of the proposed center to the existing island and its green space and historic buildings, and an enhancement of public space. Also, as you've heard throughout this conversation, we're focused on utilizing the unique environment of the island, its surrounding waters, adaptive reuse opportunities for education and engagement through a living laboratory. We focused on generating a fair return for the island and asking that respondents talk about how they can partner with the extraordinary community of existing island tenants, whether it's educational users like the Harbor School, environmental users, or arts and cultural organizations. Next slide, please. Goal number three is focused on New York City more broadly. Opportunities for New Yorkers, and particularly diverse and frontline communities, for meaningful engagement, education, training, and employment, and the co-creation of climate solutions. The RFEI specifically asks respondents to speak to how they will achieve each of these important goals, focused, as I said, on co-creation and engagement, accessible educational and research opportunities, i.e. to talk about how that will be provided to New Yorkers from diverse economic backgrounds, linkages to workforce development efforts, provision of rich programming, and expanding opportunities for MWBE businesses and all elements of the project, from construction to operations to programming. Next slide, please. Here, we're highlighting some of the specifics around the physical opportunity, and this is actually a figure from the RFEI itself. The RFEI basically states that the island has opportunities for both adaptive reuse and new construction, and that the respondent may share which sites are of interest. However, as you can see here in the sort of turquoise color, we've specifically encouraged respondents to look at two priority areas. The first being Liggett Hall, which is in the landmark historic district. It's a 300,000-square-foot building designed by Kim Mead White, and the other being Parcel E2, both of which are proximate to Yankee Pier. Next slide, please. The RFEI makes the eligibility criteria and what we're looking for from responses very clear. As you can see, any team must be led by a university or nonprofit research entity, and their proposal must include space for the academic and research uses that are really very clearly connected to the goals outlined above. Other team members and uses can be added in order to better meet the goals of the RFEI. And so, what we mean by that is that a respondent could come back and say, "Look, I really just want to focus on the academic programming. Here's my consortium of other universities, and that's all what we're going to do for now." Alternatively, somebody could come back and say, "You know, we really get this big-picture vision. We believe for us to really meet the goals you've outlined. In addition to doing that academic space, we also want to include space for businesses. We want to include space for faculty housing and dorm, and a space to bring folks from across the five boroughs together to convene." Those are obviously just examples, and both would be considered highly responsive to the RFEI. A couple of other things to call out on this slide. We're offering a long-term ground lease, also consistent with what we discussed in previous sessions. Thanks to the Mayor's Office and the city, we are offering up to $150 million in capital support for this work, and we are clarifying the level of ferry service that would be provided by the Trust in the future. Next slide. The RFEI is really focused on getting the vision from the respondent team, i.e. we're asking them to explain who you are, why you are qualified, best qualified, to take on this work in partnership, and how are you going to accomplish our shared goals for the space and center. In addition, folks point out which sites they're interested, and they present early conceptual design for the space, as well as describing what their approach to meeting the design guidelines is. Next slide, please. Based on these responses, a few different things could happen. Finalists could be selected. In other words, we get a whole bunch of responses, and we say here the top whatever number. We're going to move forward with just those. A single winner could be selected, or we could go back for a second phase, an RFP. If either of the first things were to happen, finalist selected or a winner selected, there are criteria laid out in the RFEI that form the basis for those selections. Next slide, please. This is the last slide here, but we've been extremely excited about the pickup and enthusiasm surrounding this opportunity since the RFEI was released in late June, and we're really looking forward to getting responses back. They are due at the very end of September, September 29th, and then we will be commencing review of those responses in partnership with folks from across the city. So, thank you again very much for the time, and with that, we'd be delighted to take questions or discussion.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Yes, Commissioner Dwork.
So, just to understand better, you're looking for not-for-profits to respond to this, or for for-profit enterprises?
The good question. What we're asking, any team has to be led by something that's defined in the RFEI as an eligible respondent, and that specifically means either a university or a nonprofit research partner. It's possible that on their team, they could include for-profit partners. You know, obviously, folks will need, for example, architects, but it could include, you know, somebody who's going to be a business within an accelerator space, et cetera. But the focus of this solicitation is really on that core academic user, as you highlighted.
Just a follow-up. So, for the potential of there being an accelerator space on the island, which would be, which would be great. I don't know if there's any benefits. I don't know if you've checked into the federal Opportunity Zone benefits of Governors Island. I've not checked it myself. If Governors Island qualifies for that, but that might be more of an incentive to bring on a not-for-profit and the accelerator space, which would create exactly what we're trying to get out of it. So, if you can get some clarity on that, it would be helpful.
Yeah, no, it's a great question, sir. And without opining, we are not a federal Opportunity Zone. Governors Island is not apt as such whenever, I think that program went into effect about three years or so ago. But we do have in the RFEI, for exactly the reasons you're describing, a list of potential available incentives at the city, state, and federal level, which there's some great ones out there. Startup New York, amongst many, many others.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Well, oh, yes, Commissioner Ramperstad.
Sorry. You mentioned that the release date was June 28, the deadline date is September 29, and the review process is in October. How long is that review process again, when you hit October?
We don't have that sort of firmly calendared out, in part because it is, you know, the length of time that's going to be required will be a little bit dependent on the number of responses we receive. But of course, we're looking, you know, at making all possible haste, but while also doing a thorough quality job in partnership with the selection committee, you know, DCP is involved, and many others.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Well, thank you, Ms. Newman. It's exciting to see how quickly you were able to get the RFEI out, and I'm heartened by the fact that you seem pleased by the people who are picking up the RFEI. And we'll look forward to your next presentation in a couple of months.
Thanks again for having us.
There is a continuation of this. Joshua, from our Manhattan office, going to discuss the urban design guidelines.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Joshua Semenow, and I'm an urban designer in our Manhattan office. I'm here today to discuss the design guidelines for new development on the island. Next slide, please. As a reminder, there is an agreement with the Trust that outlines four distinct stages of DCP and CPC involvement in this process. Claire has just given an overview of the RFEI and its recent release, and I'll now discuss with you the agency's role in the development of the design guides, more specifically with some of its content in more detail. Next slide, please. Over the past few years, the agency has been working in close collaboration with the Trust, developing the zoning regulations, which, as you'll remember, were approved by this commission earlier this year on March 17, and later approved by the City Council on May 11. An important consideration throughout this process was determining what kinds of information would be most appropriate for the zoning text, and others which would be better served as guidelines. For example, while the zoning can often be very technical and quantitative by its very nature, on the other hand, design guidelines can offer the opportunity for more descriptive and qualitative assessment. Essentially, design guidelines can be thought of as an extension of the zoning resolution by allowing us the opportunity to elaborate on or further explain certain aspects of the zoning in order to paint a clearer picture as to the quality of the built environment envisioned on the island. A quick example might be how we talk about building form in zoning using straightforward terms like heightened setback. While on the guidelines, you'll see more description of how things come together as a whole, like varying building heights across the development zones, in order to inform one another and create a compelling skyline, or breaking down the building massing to be more responsive to the pedestrian scale. Next slide, please. I should also note that the use of design guidelines are a common practice within the agency, particularly with larger-scale projects. Some recent examples include Hunter's Point South, as well as Essex Crossing, Seward Park, and even, most recently, with Borough-Based Jails. Next slide, please. The Governors Island Design Guidelines are organized by three overarching categories: resiliency and sustainability, buildings, and open space, which you can see depicted in the column on the left. Each of these categories are then broken down into different supporting themes, which you can see in the lighter colors to the right. While these design guidelines do provide a more detailed framework for development, it is important to keep in mind that they are still flexible enough to encourage a high degree of creativity and innovation. This is accomplished by avoiding more specific details, such as aesthetic preferences like color, material, or shape, and instead focusing on broader outcomes we want to ensure, like experience, legibility, and comfort, which may be achieved through any number of design approaches. Now, without going through the entire design guidelines document, I will now walk you through an example from each of these categories to give you a better sense of the content. Next slide, please. Beginning with resiliency and sustainability. While this is certainly a lot of text on this slide, it is copied directly from the design guidelines and is included here to illustrate how a more descriptive narrative is used to outline the broader mission and goals of new development. I should also note that the language used in these guidelines may, in many ways, reflect what is included in the CPC report, so the vision for the future of the built environment on the island is really part of a unified approach. And lastly, I'd like to point your attention to the four supporting themes highlighted here: prioritize climate, minimize resource consumption, support ecosystems, and living laboratory. All of these not only apply to both buildings and open spaces, but also speak toward the broader vision for Governors Island as a place for leadership and innovation in this particular field. Next slide, please. Within each of the supporting themes under resiliency and sustainability, which you can see summarized across the top of this slide, there are additional details outlined that further elaborate on more specific areas. Using prioritize climate, supporting theme as an example here, you can see how additional guidance around more specific issues such as carbon footprint, emissions, and heat island effect are being addressed. A similar structure is used in each of the other supporting themes. Next slide, please. Moving on to buildings. Slightly different from what we've just looked at with resiliency and sustainability, each of the supporting themes under buildings, which here are listed across the top, begin with an introductory narrative. Using context as an example supporting theme here, you can see how this not only speaks towards how new development should respond to existing contexts, but also to new contexts, with the recognition that development here may be an iterative process taking place over a number of years. Next slide, please. Again, within each of the supporting themes, there are more specific areas that are addressed. Sticking with the context-supporting theme as an example, here you can see five important areas that are outlined: parks and open space, historic district, waterfront, key views, and placemaking. And the outcomes that we're looking to achieve are each, which all in some way seek a harmony between old and new. Next slide, please. Finally, turning to open space. Here we have two supporting themes: public open space and public pathways. Taking public pathways as an example here illustrates some of what I spoke about earlier about how design guidelines can be used to further elaborate on zoning. For example, as you may recall from the zoning text, there are requirements for primary and secondary connections, but those are really only minimum requirements. And in order to have truly porous development zones in a highly networked pedestrian circulation system, there will need to be a variety of pathways above and beyond primary and secondary connections employed, and this narrative really emphasizes this goal. Next slide, please. And again, as with all of the supporting themes, there are more specific areas addressed. And for public pathways, you can see how the key areas not only describe some of the physical characteristics of these pathways, like connectivity and signage, but also the quality and experience these pathways should seek to achieve, like high levels of pedestrian comfort, welcoming environment, et cetera. Next slide, please. To conclude, we return again to the four stages of DCP and CPC involvement, as a reminder that our engagement with the Trust and development on Governors Island will continue through this selection process and beyond. Next slide, please. And finally, returning to the key dates Claire shared during her presentation, as a reminder of where exactly we are in this process and when we'll likely be returning to the Commission for another update. This concludes my presentation. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commission? This really was just skimming the top of the waves with respect to the incredibly detailed work that we've done, hands-in-glove with the folks from the Trust. And if any Commissioners wanted more detail, we could gladly provide a briefing on it. Thanks, Josh.
There was more detailed information in the previous presentation, wasn't there?
Right, and this is just a further elaboration. We're drilling down deeper. Okay, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a special presentation by Timothy Frye of the Landmarks Preservation Commission.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lago and Commissioners. I'm Tim Frye, LPC Director of Strategic Planning and Special Projects. And I'm presenting on the Dorance Brooks Square Historic District. The district features intact streetscapes that exhibit a striking variety of architectural styles and buildings designed by prominent New York architects. This residential enclave is also significant for its association with notable African-American figures during the Harlem Renaissance from the early 1920s through the 1940s. Next slide, please. The district features two sections shown here, between St. Nicholas Park to the west and Adam Clayton Powell Jr. Boulevard to the east. The eastern section abuts the southern boundary of St. Nicholas Historic District, outlined here in blue, which was designated in 1967. At the public hearing on April 20 of this year, 12 people spoke in favor of the proposed designation, including representatives of Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, Historic Districts Council, New York Landmarks Conservancy, Society for the Architecture of the City, Dorance Brooks Property Owners and Residents Association, Friends of the Upper East Side, Save Harlem Now, West Harlem Community Preservation Organization, and four individuals. In addition, the Commission received five letters of support, including from Landmark East Harlem, Village Preservation, and three individuals. The Commission also received testimony at the public hearing from property owners of Mount Calvary United Methodist Church and 112118 Edgecombe Avenue, supporting the district but asking for the property to be removed from the boundary. Three letters from the property owners of Grace Church at 308310 West 139th Street, asking that the property be removed from the district, and a letter from an individual asking that the 200 block of West 136th Street not be included in the district. Next slide, please. The historic district is an exciting intersection between agency priorities under Chair Carroll's leadership and the community board's preservation policies for Harlem. We have worked closely with Community Board 10 on priorities laid out in the preservation plan, and in recent years, designating the Mount Morris Park Historic District Extension and the Central Harlem West 130th to 132nd Street Historic District. Next slide, please. Under the speculative development model, a developer would purchase multiple adjacent lots and erect the maximum number of row houses, working with architects and builders well-versed in popular residential styles, and using available architectural elements to minimize costs. Because of this, as evident in these images, the proposed historic district is characterized by remarkably cohesive streetscapes. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I apologize for the brevity of the presentation on the history of the district.
Not a problem. Is there anything else that you wanted to cover that you weren't able to cover with the slides?
I did want to point out that Dorance Brooks, who's named after the, or who the square was named after, is widely regarded as a hero and is renowned for his bravery and service to our country. His actions helped dismantle racist notions about Black Americans, fitness for military service, and Harry S. Truman later stated that it is credited to the people of this great city of New York that his heroism be appreciated and acknowledged here. And Dorance Brooks Square was the location of notable political protests from the 1920s on, and visits from Harry S. Truman in 1948 and in 1952, when he was given an award for civil rights achievements, including desegregating the U.S. Armed Forces. So, there's a tremendous amount of wonderful history related to African-Americans fight for civil rights and culture related to the Harlem Renaissance, and we hope this historic district suitably recognizes that history as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Cerula?
Just a quick question. In your statement, you mentioned that there were, I believe, at least two speakers who requested that properties be removed from the geography, but you didn't indicate what the position of the Commission was with respect to that request. What comes of that request, and how is that communicated to those who have asked for that consideration?
Thank you for that question. To start, the final boundary was chosen after a careful building-by-building analysis of integrity and architectural quality, as well as the study of cultural significance in the area. And in addition to the areas of highest integrity, the choice to include Mount Calvary was driven by its cultural significance. And by the 1940s, the church had one of the largest African-American congregations in Harlem. And when the Commission voted to designate, the Commissioners were aware that there is an issued demolition permit for Mount Calvary United Methodist. But because the permit had not yet been acted on, they voted to include the building in the boundary. The same would go for Grace Congregational Church at 306310 West 39th Street. The church was dubbed the Actors Church because of its longstanding custom of ministering to performing artists and hosting recitals. And we worked with, we met with the religious institution, and we discussed with them their proposed plans. But again, after careful deliberation, the Commission also decided to move forward with the boundaries as proposed, and LPC has designated religious institutions and districts across the city, having extensive experience working together to address specific needs related to the maintenance and adaptive reuse of these challenging structures. So, we're committed to working with them on a solution.
Okay, I appreciate that. I do know that, whether real or perceived, and I know from my own experience, very often, real financial burdens on the cost of maintaining a landmark, particularly for not-for-profits and religious institutions, exist, and whatever continued support that the Commission can provide, I'm sure will go a very long way.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Dwork?
Can you shed some light on residents, or if they're homeowners that reside there, or they're renters?
The breakdown between owner occupied and renter occupied?
Yeah.
I don't have that information in front of me. I don't know. But the majority of the participants in our community outreach efforts through the Community Board were with property owners.
Other questions? Then thank you for the presentation.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the first item on the Okay, that brings us to the first item on our agenda, which is a pre-hearing review of the same historic district designation here in Community District 10, and our presenter is Jose Trusias.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you guys heard before, on June 15, the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission designated approximately 325 buildings as the Dorance Brooks Square Historic District. Next slide, please. Located in Central Harlem, Borough of Manhattan, Community District 10, the area is generally bounded by St. Nicholas Avenue to the west, West 140th Street to the north, West 136th Street to the south, and Allen Clayton Powell Boulevard to the east. The existing St. Nicholas Historic District highlighted here in blue is located to the proposed, is located, I guess, into the proposed district, and it was designated as a historic district by the Landmarks Preservation Commission in 1967. Next slide, please. The district is predominantly Sone R72 with a few packets of RA and some C14 commercial overlays. I mean, into high density residential district with a typical commercial uses for residential areas, including retail, restaurants, and services for the day-to-day needs of the neighborhood. The district is well served by public transportation, including access to the A, B, C, and D subway lines at the 125, 125th Street Station, access to the A, B, and C subway lines at the 135th Station, and access to the 213 subway lines at the 125th, 135th, and 145th Street Stations. Bus routes, bus routes run across the main avenues and arterial roadways as St. Nicholas Avenue, Franklin Douglas Boulevard, Allen C. Powell Boulevard, and 125th, 135th, and 146th. Next slide, please. The district features a striking collection of row houses, religious structures, and apartment buildings designed by prominent New York City architects to ensure they have cohesive streetscapes. According to the LPC findings, the group for historic district is an incredible intact example of central Harlem during the 20th century residential development. Primarily made up along consistent rows of houses built between the 1880s and 1900s. Next slide. However, the district also includes multifamily residential structures constructed concurrently with the row house development along the avenues and larger apartment buildings constructed after the 1900s. The designation of the Dorance Brooks Historic District is an important reminder of both the early development of the neighborhood as well as its contribution to the history of New York City today. The department is not aware of any conflict between the subject historic district designation with the zoning resolution, projected public improvements, or any plans for development and growth, improvement or renewal in the vicinity of a proposed historic district boundary. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a question. Okay, then we will see this at a public hearing on Wednesday.
Right, the second item on our agenda is a certification of special permits in Manhattan Community District 5. Our presenter is Aska Mohedin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Just noting that Commissioner Cirulla is recused.
This is a private application by 415 Madison Avenue LLC seeking to develop a new commercial office building with a public concourse. The site is located at 415 Madison Avenue in the East Midtown neighborhood of Manhattan Community District 5. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting two East Midtown Subdistrict special permits to enable the proposed office tower development. The first is a bonus floor area special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section 81645. It allows a bonus of up to three FAR sites that provide a public concourse and association with development. The second is a waiver special permit pursuant to ZR section 81685. This section enables sites in the East Midtown Subdistrict to seek modifications to certain regulations. In this instance, height and setback, retail continuity, and street wall requirements. Next slide. 415 Madison Avenue is located on the corner of Madison Avenue and East 48th Street on the block bound by East 49th Street to the north, Park Avenue to the east, East 48th Street to the south, and Madison Avenue to the west. The development site is located in Manhattan's Midtown Central Business District. It is mapped with C53 zoning district and has a base FAR of 15 for non-residential uses. The site is also within the southern suburb area of the East Midtown Subdistrict of the Special Midtown District. Surrounding area is characterized by high density commercial office buildings with ground or retail uses. The area serves Grand Central Station located approximately four blocks to the south, providing access to the 4, 5, 6, 7, and shuttle subway lines, as well as the major terminus of the Metro North Railroad. The Long Island Railroad will also have a major terminus here known as Eastside Access planned for opening in late 2022. Next slide, please. This map shows the East Midtown rezoning area, which was adopted by the CPC in 2017 with the goal of replacing the existing aging office building stock with new commercial development to ensure the area is featured as a world-class business district. 415 Madison Avenue is identified in red here. Next slide, please. Here's some visual context of the surrounding high density commercial area. The aerial image on the right is looking northeast. The existing building on the project site is outlined with a dashed red line. To the immediate south, across 48th Street, is 270 Park Avenue, which has since been demolished. Next slide, please. Taking a closer look at the project site, it comprises a corner lot with 100 feet of frontage along Madison Avenue and 116 feet of frontage along East 48th Street. It has a lot area of 11,674 square feet. The existing building is a 24-story commercial office building built in 1955, predating the current zoning regulations. It contains approximately 216,000 square feet of floor area, which is about 40,900 square feet above what would be permitted under current zoning. Next slide, please. I'll also note here that the MTA has selected 415 Madison Avenue, highlighted in the figure in red, as an important access point for the future Eastside Access project. When completed, Eastside Access will serve approximately 162,000 Long Island Railroad customers a day in a new terminal and concourse. The Eastside Access concourse and many of its street level connections are under construction presently. The project site is particularly important as it will provide the northernmost pedestrian access to the new concourse, serving those living or working anywhere to the north of the site as the closest entry point. Next slide. I'll now go through the details of the project. Here's a rendering of the proposed development in the context of East Midtown viewed from the corner of Madison Avenue and 48th Street. The proposed development is a 591-foot tall commercial office building comprising of 287,000 zoning square feet or 24.6 FAR. It will accommodate an east side access entrance at ground floor and an open air public concourse. The larger building on the right of the, of the rendering is the future JP Morgan Chase headquarters at 270 Park Avenue. This is a 1.8 million square feet, 1,400-foot tall commercial office building and was the first project to utilize the provisions of the Greater East Midtown Framework in 2018. Next slide, please. The project is enabled by a series of actions that are proceeding separate of the special permits we're here to present today. But they're still necessary to understand all the pursuant to the Greater East Midtown Framework. The first certification is under ZR section 81643, and it will allow the reconstruction of 40,900 square feet of floor area that exists in the current building today. This mechanism exists to encourage existing overbuilt office buildings in the district to redevelop despite a pre-existing non-compliance with the current zoning. Certification allows this overbuilt floor area to be effectively reinstated in the new building. The second is a certification under ZR section 81642, which will enable the applicant to purchase and transfer, and transfer 36,000, 36,000 square feet of development rights from St. Bartolomew's Church to 415 Madison Avenue. The illustrated drawing on the right shows how these nondiscretionary certifications will add 6.6 FAR to the 15 FAR as a right building to facilitate a 21.6 FAR building. Both certifications are currently being reviewed by Community Board 5, the Manhattan Borough President, and the council member. Next slide, please. The two certifications trigger the need for the applicant to make a monetary contribution to the East Midtown Public Oral Improvement Fund in excess of $4.7 million, which will be used for pedestrian enrollment, network improvements in the area. Additionally, a portion of the applicant's development rights transaction amounting to about $565,000, will be required to be spent on continued maintenance of the church building. I should clarify again that these certifications and the related contribution to the Public Oral Improvement Fund are not being considered today as part of this application. We note these actions for context to show how they interact with the requested special permits that we'll discuss now. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the two actions we are considering today. The first is a special permit associated with the provision of an onsite public concourse under ZR section 81645. This provision is, the provision of this amenity enables an additional three FAR or approximately 35,000 square feet of floor area to be included in the proposed development. The addition of this FAR on top of the 21.6 FAR building facilitated by the nondiscretionary certifications we just covered results in a 24.6 FAR building with approximately 287,000 square feet of commercial floor area. The illustrated drawing on the right shows how the special permit facilitates this final piece of the proposed building. Next slide, please. Taking a closer look at the proposed ground floor, you can see that the proposed public concourse highlighted in the figure in purple fronts the corner of Madison Avenue and 48th Street and integrates with the east side access entrance highlighted in yellow. Next slide. Here, the proposed ground floor has been categorized into program components. Each is competing for space in the footprint of this 11,600 square foot site. Public concourse identified in green is a 2,377 square foot space occupying the most prominent corner of the site. The concourse has been designed to encourage circulation from both frontages with direct connection to the east side access entrance. It also includes a passive recreation space with various seating options and artwork. The east side access entrance identified in blue has been designed in collaboration with the MTA. It allows for direct access from the public concourse and 48th Street. Connection to the east side access concourse below is via a bank of three escalators and a stair. A small retail pavilion of 330 square feet has also been included, which will serve jacket activating the public concourse. The remaining portion of the ground floor footprint identified in red accommodates the critical functions of the commercial building above, including lobby on Madison Avenue, loading dock on 48th Street, lack of housing servicing, and building core. Next slide, please. Here's a rendering of the open air concourse, the proposed building above viewed from Madison Avenue. The public concourse includes defining features such as the floor-to-ceiling height of 28 feet and 6 inches, as well as a colonnade along the street edge. Next slide, please. This rendering shows the public concourse and east side access entrance viewed from the corner of Madison Avenue and 48th Street looking into the public concourse. The building lobby is on the left. Next slide. The space is designed to accommodate passive recreation on the left facing Madison Avenue and a circulation space for the east side access entrance on the right along 48th Street. A small retail pavilion next to the east side access entrance provide additional activation of the space. A feature artwork is being shown here in the planters resembling trees. The department has worked with the applicant team to ensure the design provides generous circulation, seating options, materials, and points of visual interest, as well as promoting view lines between public concourse, lobby, retail, transit access components to ensure a welcoming and active public space. Next slide, please. The second action being requested is a waiver special permit under ZR section 81685. This section enables sites in the East Midtown Subdistrict to seek modifications to certain regulations. I'll run through the details of those waivers now. Next slide, please. First, the applicant is seeking a modification of the height and step back regulations under ZR 8126 and/or 8127 as modified by 8166 to facilitate the construction of a development that incorporates a double height ground floor and floor area bonus while maintaining a Class A office appropriate floor plates and floor to floor heights. The figure on the left shows one possible outcome with the height and step back regulation in place for this type of office building. In this scenario, the upper floors of the new development would have smaller, less efficient floor plates and result in a taller, slimmer building. Floor-to-floor heights would also be less than what is needed for a modern Class A office space as floor areas compressed toward the base. The proposed building on the right inclusive of height and setback waivers incorporates a lower tower and lesser setbacks that enables both larger office footprints and floor to floor heights. Next slide, please. Second, the retail continuity regulations require that certain retail and service uses occupy the ground floor of a new building along its Madison Avenue frontage. The applicant is seeking a modification to facilitate the public concourse in an approximately 40-foot wide public building lobby along the Madison Avenue frontage. Next slide, please. Lastly, the applicant is seeking a modification of the mandatory street wall requirements, which states that the street wall of a building along Madison Avenue must be within 10 feet of the street line and permitted recesses may not exceed a depth of 15 feet. The waiver will facilitate the open air public concourse setback 30 feet or more from Madison Avenue and an open air terrace on the second floor with a depth of 19 feet from Madison Avenue. Next slide, please. Part of the findings associated with the waiver special permit requires that the building complement the surrounding area. As you can see from these neighborhood character diagrams, the proposed building is consistent with the character of the Madison Avenue and 48th Street, 48th Street streetscapes with the bulk and scale that will not be out of place amongst its surrounds in East Midtown. Next slide, please. To avoid you having to try and read this, the findings of the first special permit address matters like the quality of the public concourse proposed and ensuring that the concourse provides a benefit to circulation and activation. It must also be found that the public concourse merits the amount of floor area bonus. Next slide. Listed here are the relevant findings of the special, of the second special permit. The findings speak to modifications being made to the regulations to ensure a development harmonious for the strategy of the Special Midtown District. The findings also seek to ensure that modification of street wall height and setback regulations result in the improved distribution of bulk to ensure a harmonious outcome with the goals of the Special Midtown District. Next slide. So in summary, the applicant is requesting two special permits that will facilitate a new 40-story commercial office tower. The project is inclusive of a new public concourse, major transit access point, and is consistent with the goals of the recently adopted Greater East Midtown Framework, which in particular seeks to replace existing aging office building stock with new commercial development. That concludes our presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Aska. I was hearkening back to when Cheryl Cohen-Efron was on the commission and we were considering the Greater East Midtown zoning. And at that point, she asked a prescient question of what would happen if we had multiple projects going forward at the same time? And I remember at that time thinking, wow, that's a high-quality problem to have, but is unlikely. And yet we have 270 Park, the Grand Hyatt, which we call Project Commodore, and now 415 Madison Avenue. So she really was a seer. Commissioner Duell.
Looking at the renderings you put up earlier, there, there seemed to be some, the connect, the transit access point is connected to the loading docks. And that was a concern for pedestrians and circulation going in, especially during rush hour times, there'd be a conflict. Can, can you speak, does any mitigate, can you speak to any mitigation efforts being put in place so that pedestrians or commuters can go up 48th Street into the transit access point without any interference from trucks or whatever might be loading and unloading?
So for the, particularly for the entrance, there are two sets of entrances provided. So there's a north-facing and a west-facing, one through the public concourse and then one through the 48th Street. So there'll be multiple options for pedestrians and to.
Aska, could you call up the appropriate, Aska, could you call up the appropriate page so that we can see it as you're describing?
Can we go to the ground floor plans?
So I hear your answer, but I don't know if that satisfies pedestrians going westbound from 48th Street.
Yeah, we can return to the question about the pedestrian and loading dock conflict and if the. And if the, um, applicant has anything in place for that.
Uh, go ahead. You see, the entrance
Yeah, we'll pass this concern along to the applicant so that they can address it between now and the time it comes back to us.
Perhaps as an idea where they can, um, schedule deliveries so that it wouldn't conflict with rush hour pedestrian traffic. Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, I was wondering what the applicant, um, and, and maybe this is a question for later, but what they propose for the signage along the street to indicate that this is a connection to east side access. I mean, you are, obviously, when you walk into the space, you can tell, but, um, you know, the, uh, it's a rendering at this point. But I, I would like their thoughts on how to make sure that we, um, incorporate signage that, um, you know, raises awareness of this entrance to passersby who may not be familiar with it since it's a new entrance.
Um, I think for the signage as well, uh, we can speak to the applicant and see what is, are being considered there. Um, the east side access entrance is an easement, uh, agreement with the MTA. So I believe this will be something that both the MTA and the applicant would, uh, work on.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie.
We don't have the raise hand function like we have on Zoom, you know?
What a concept that you actually have to raise your hand.
Um, actually, could you put up the same slide that you answered, Commissioner Dwyer, earlier? Of the ground floor. Okay, so, um, I'm assuming that the east side access, uh, agreement with the MTA is part and parcel of East Midtown zoning and isn't a bonusable entity? Cause we haven't talked about that as a bonus.
Yeah, that's correct. That's a separate agreement. It's not, yeah.
Okay, oh, okay. So when it comes to the public concourse, is that a POPS subject to the POPS regulations once it's in place?
Um, so the east side, uh, the framework, the east mid, the East Midtown framework does not speak to, um, that the public concourse being subject to, um, the POPS regulation. So it's, that's not part of zoning resolution.
So what's to prevent the owner privatizing that space?
Well, it is a publicly, uh, it's part, the agreement is for a publicly accessible open space, but it's just that the design regulations are not subject to the POPS regulations. That's what I was trying to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I don't really understand why. It wouldn't be really, but
Two separate regimes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I just think it would be important to make sure that it maintains a public space, that it's not privatized because we've had that issue.
When we come back, we can explain how the agreement will shore.
Okay, okay. And then my second question was, um, it's, what did you say, two thousand, three hundred odd square feet? A public concourse, although a lot of that is devoted to getting into the, uh, sub, into the train entrance. And then in re- return, thirty-five thousand square feet of additional bulk on the building. Is that consistent with previous bonus deals on POPS and other public spaces, that, that ratio of public space to FAR?
Yeah, and it was specifically spelled out in the East Midtown zoning where improvements were identified in advance because we work, usually it is, well, the few times we've had this kind of improvement.
Yeah.
It comes along bespoke as opposed to having been analyzed in advance.
Good, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dwyer.
Going further, expanding on Commissioner Bernie's comments. Would there be a way to have an agreement that would mirror our POPS agreement so that there's signage in it? And, and operating hours and
I think we should, and, and, and there are more experienced, uh, Manhattan folks on the call who maybe can jump in here. My, my understanding, this is subject to a, a, uh, special permit, uh, that we are requiring this. And so it, it has many of the same protections that a POPS has. It just doesn't have the same design requirements. That, that it is on the drawings, it is in perpetuity, in perpetuity, open area for, per the, the drawings that we require. And I, and my understanding is that in other instances where we have required open space pursuant to a special permit, that they get similar treatments in terms of the signage and, 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 um, those types of things.
I think we spent, we spent a lot of time on the signage for the POPS back in the day. And I think that it, it's important that this space reflects that it's open to the public and not just a access point for transit.
Like, when we come back, we can provide you with a comfort. It, it's not, POPS are passive open space with, um, seating requirements, table requirements. Sure, this is a public access, so it has a, a difference. But the concerns about not having it be privatized, about having it be open, about having it be accessible are absolutely legit. And we will bring our more technical folks back when this comes for pre-hearing review.
Um, yeah, and I
One other question.
I just want to also clarify, there is a restricted declaration, so that is part, that is part of the regulation of making sure that the POPS, this is, that this is an open space. And, uh, part of the, the record, the, the, the RD also includes, this will be a twenty-four, seven open space. And there is, um, in the approved drawings, there's also signage that is, um, part, that is meets our regulations and, uh, of the POPS.
Okay. Uh, my other question was, uh, does the owner have an idea of who would occupy the retail? Will it be food? Or will it be, you know, transit authority memorabilia or what will it be?
Um, their preferred type of tenant is coffee or, or fast casual tenant.
Other questions? Well then, this application is certified and thank you, Aska.
Third item on our agenda is a certification of a disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan Community District One. Our presenter is Stephen Johnson.
Thank you and good afternoon, commissioners. So the New York City Department of Small Business Services seeks approval of a disposition of leasehold and easement interests to various city-owned properties located in the South Street Seaport area in Manhattan Community District One. Uh, the disposition area is subject to a lease agreement between the city and South Street Seaport Limited Partnership, which is a, which if a renewal option is exercised, expired on December thirtieth, nineteen seventy-two. Uh, this application would allow the city to enter into an amended and restated lease that will run through twenty-one, twenty or an additional forty-eight years. Next slide, please. The disposition area consists of Pier sixteen and Pier seventeen, the Tin Building, the Fulton Market Building, Shermer Horn Road, Titanic Park, and the de-mapped portions of Fulton Street between South and Water Street, Front Street between John and Beekman Streets, Water Street between Fulton and Beekman Streets. These streets are located in the South Street Seaport Sub District within the Lower Manhattan Special Districts. Next slide, please. The disposition area is to the southwest of the Brooklyn Bridge and the East River Waterfront, generally east of the financial district and civic center. The South Street Seaport neighborhood includes a range of land uses and building types. Nearby blocks include hotels, low-rise residential uses and ground floor restaurant and retail uses. The surrounding area is very well-served by public transit, subway, bus and ferry access. And all the lots in the disposition area are located within the South Street Seaport Historic District and the coastal zone boundary, and all the lots are non-residential properties owned by the city of New York. Next slide, please. So much of the Seaport's current configuration and design dates from a nineteen seventy-seven master plan commissioned by the city in collaboration with the Seaport Museum and the Rouse Company, which emphasized commercial development in the area. The master plan was adopted through a series of public approvals in nineteen eighty-one that included street demappings and amendments of the urban renewal plan and dispositions to the Seaport Museum and the Rouse Company. The term of the original lease would have expired on December thirtieth, twenty thirty-one, but it included options for extensions and until December thirtieth, uh, twenty seventy-two by option of the tenants. Now, the Howard Hughes Corporation acquired the Rouse Company's interest in the original lease, which is administered by the New York City Economic Development Corporation on behalf of the Small Business Services. In twenty thirteen, the original lease was amended and restated between the city and the South Street Seaport Limited Partnership to, among other things, provide for the renovation and rehabilitation of Pier seventeen. The amended and restated lease was further amended twice in twenty seventeen. First, the city added the Tin Building to the premises covered by the lease and conveyed the South Street Seaport Limited Partnership a leasehold interest. Second, the city and the limited partnership made operational changes and renovation commitments under the amended and restated lease. And in twenty twenty, the amended and restated lease was amended for a third time to modify certain rights and obligations related to the premises of one thirty-three Beekman Street and the de-mapped streets. Next slide, please. So we're moving on to, uh, some images of the area. Uh, here we have Pier seventeen, which includes public open space and mixed-use building comprising retail, restaurant, entertainment and office uses. And the Tin Building, which will, uh, eventually feature a culinary marketplace with fresh and prepared foods. It is currently under construction and slated to open in late twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Uh, this slide also shows Pier sixteen, which is used as a recreational and cultural entertainment space. Uh, Pier sixteen is leased by the city to the South Street Seaport Museum and is also re-doctoring historic ships and other vessels. Next slide, please. So this block contains Shermer Horn Row and includes ground floor retail uses and other commercial uses as well as the, uh, existing South Street Seaport Museum, which you could kind of see on the lower left with the it's right by the red flag that's waving there. Next slide, please. This is, uh, Titanic Memorial Park and is located on the northern tip of the disposition area and is approximately five thousand, four hundred square feet of open space with seating and a sixty-foot lighthouse to commemorate those who died on the Titanic. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the Fulton Market Building. Uh, it's across Fulton Street from, uh, Shermer Horn Row and has a restaurant, retail and entertainment uses. Uh, the northern portion of this section of Block ninety-six contains four-story walk-up buildings with retail on the ground floor. Next slide, please. We have some images here of the de-mapped streets. They were originally city-owned map streets, but were de-mapped in nineteen eighty-three by the City Planning Commission to spur economic development in the area and create a pedestrian plaza and a pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly, uh, area. So today, the de-mapped streets are maintained by the South Street Seaport Limited Partnership and are activated with a garden bar and other programming pictured in the images. Next slide, please. So to summarize, uh, the New York City Department of Small Business Services seeks approval of a disposition of leasehold and easement interests to various cities' own properties located in the South Street Seaport area. The disposition area is subject to a lease agreement between the city and the limited partnership, which if a renewal option is ex- exercised expires in twenty seventy-two. This application will allow the city to enter into an amended and restated lease through twenty-one, twenty. And as consideration for the lease extension, the Howard Hughes Corporation has agreed to improve the unfinished portion of the East River Esplanade to the standards of, uh, nearby improvements, because a lot of work is going along, going on along the Esplanade, the improvements. And they've also committed to making improvements to Titanic Park, uh, to a standard that is still under negotiation. A lot of these, uh, this process is still being negotiated with the city. Uh, both of these sets of improvements will be subject to design review by public agencies. And I'm happy to take any questions on the project.
As some commissioners may know, this is my third stint in New York City government and this is the only project that I have worked on in all three different stints under three mayors. Um, I'll
Be back in forty-eight years.
Commissioner Capelli.
Are, are these buildings landmarked?
They're in the historic district and, uh, so they're all, uh, within the historic district, so they have landmark status. Uh, I, I don't know if each individual building is landmark, but I can look into that for you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, this application is certified. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
The fourth item on our agenda is a certification of a special permit and a referral of a zoning, uh, tax amendment in Brooklyn Community District One. Our presenter is Lilia Carrier.
All right, good afternoon, commissioners. You can go to the next slide, please. This is an application by One Wife LLC requesting a tax amendment to expand an existing industrial business incentive area and a CPC special permit to facilitate the development of an eight-story approximately eighty thousand, seven hundred square foot mixed office, uh, industrial and retail development located at One Wife Avenue in Brooklyn, uh, in Williamsburg, Brooklyn, Community District One. Next slide, please. So the proposed, uh, project area is outlined in red and is located within the Greenpoint, uh, Williamsburg Industrial Business Zone, which is shown in the black outline here. Um, it is located to the east of the current and future Bushwick Inlet Park and west of the McCarran Park, um, with access to the G Train at NASA Avenue, the L Train at Bedford Avenue and two ferry stops at India Street and North Seventh Street. Highlighted in pink are the recent IBA special permit projects, including Twelve Franklin Street located to the northwest, one oh-three North Fourteenth Street, um, which is the southeast and Twenty-Five Kent to the southwest. Next slide, please. The surrounding area is located between Greenpoint and Williamsburg. Uh, the area is largely mapped within, uh, M zoning districts. The project area and the immediate surrounding area are located in an M-one-two zoning district, which allows a ma- a maximum commercial and industrial FAR of two and a maximum community facility FAR of four point eight. The blocks to the northeast are located, uh, in an M-one-one zoning district, which allows for a maximum commercial and industrial FAR of one and a maximum community facility FAR of two point four. The one block immediately west of the project area is located within an M-one-five zoning district, which allows for a maximum commercial and industrial FAR of five and a maximum community facility FAR of six point five. Next slide. The surrounding area consists primarily of low-scale buildings with a mix of light industrial, office, hotel, retail and restaurant uses. The thirty-five acre McCarran Park is located east of the project area and the, when complete, uh, Bushwick Inlet Park will stretch from North Ninth Street to, uh, Q Street. Uh, then we'll have a total of twenty-eight acres. The development in the area includes several IBA projects. There's Twenty-Five Kent Avenue, which is the first ground-up office industrial buil- buil- building developed in the area, uh, which is located three blocks southwest of the project area. One oh-three North, uh, Thirteenth Street, which is a seven-story mixed industrial commercial building currently under, under construction and one block south of the project area. Twelve Franklin, a proposed seven-story mixed-use and commercial building northwest of the project area. And the twenty-nine, forty-one White Avenue, um, project, which is a pre-cert IBA, um, project, which is also located one block south. Immediately northwest across One Wife Avenue, across White Avenue, uh, is the recently approved Acme Smoke Fish rezoning that facilitated the proposed new nine-story mixed commercial and industrial building at Thirty Dem Street. Other development in the area generally has been limited to hotels such as the twenty-two-story Williamville Hotel, located two blocks south of the project area. Next slide. Um, so here are a few photos to give you an idea of the built context. So development in the area, um, will range from seven to nine stories. So there's three in black is the, the IBA projects and then the Acme Smith, uh, back in rezoning is in the orange. Next slide, please. The project area is a sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-two square foot irregular zoning lot, uh, co-terminus with the city block, uh, bounded by White Avenue to the north and west, Bankers, uh, Banker Street to the east and North Fifteenth Street to the south. The project area is co-terminus with the development site. Next slide. The project area is improved with three one-story industrial buildings with a built, uh, FAR of point three five. The site was previously occupied by uses such as metal, metal fabrication, marble and granite contracting and an architectural design studio. Next slide. So the proposed development is an eight-story, a hundred and ten-foot-tall, eighty thousand, seven hundred square foot building containing sixty-seven thousand square feet of office and retail space and thirteen thousand, five hundred square feet of light industrial space. Next slide. The entrance to the lobby, uh, will be located on Banker Street, but will also be accessible from White Avenue as well. There will be one curb cut, um, for entry to the loading berth along Banker Street. Next slide, please. The required industrial use and accessory retail uses will be located on the ground floor. The cellar and second through eighth floors will contain use group six. The cellar and second through eighth floors will contain use groups six. Terraces will be located on the fourth, sixth, and eighth floor. There will also be a publicly accessible open space with a planted seating area at the intersection of Banker Street and North Fifteenth Street. Next slide, please. So to facilitate this development, the private applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment to designate the project area as an industrial business incentive area and requesting a CPC special permit. Next slide. So a set of discretionary findings must be met to grant the special permit, including promoting a mix, promoting a beneficial mix of uses and superior site planning. Next slide. The zoning text amendment would establish a new IBA in the zoning text map. A project within IBA can seek a special permit to modify the underlying FAR in building envelope and to modify the parking and loading requirements. Next slide. In order to increase, increase the available FAR for certain commercial and industrial uses above the underlying two point zero FAR for permitted uses, a project must provide up to point eight FAR of required industrial uses or a set of industrial, of light industrial and manufacturing uses that can more easily co-locate with in commerce, with commercial uses. To unlock an additional two FAR for incentive uses, which are permitted in M one-two districts, with the exception of hotels, retail, food and beverage, and entertainment. The applicant is proposing a four point eight FAR building and will provide point eight FAR of required industrial use as well as two point zero FAR of incentive use. As a condition of the special permit, the underlying building envelope would no longer apply. Instead of the sky exposure plane, a contextual envelope encouraging a loft-like building is required. The maximum base height would be seventy-five feet, and the building could rise to a maximum height of one hundred and ten feet after a ten-to-fifteen-foot setback. The proposed development adheres to this envelope. Next slide. The ground floor would be used primarily for required industrial uses, such as small-scale manufacturing establishments. It could, would also contain a lobby at the corner of Banker and White Avenue and one loading berth with access to freight elevator, one freight elevator. The entrance for the loading berth will be located on Banker Street with a curb cut for the entrance. Next slide, please. The second through eighth floor, eighth floor would contain a mix of permitted uses and incentive uses. The space has been designed to be flexible and accommodate a variety of types of users. Next slide. And we also will have terraces that are located on the fourth, fifth, and sixth floors. Next slide, please. Okay. So we have finally, the applicant is also seeking a special permit to modify parking and loading requirements. Certain M one-two parking regulations could require the production of up to nearly two hundred and forty-six parking spaces, depending on use and for loading births. The applicant is proposing to waive the off-street parking requirement and reduce the loading of birth requirement from four to one. Next slide, please. So in summary, the applicant is requesting a zoning text amendment to expand the existing industrial business incentive area and seeking a special permit to facilitate development of an eight-story, approximately eighty thousand seven hundred square foot mixed office industrial and retail development at One Wife Avenue. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Bernie.
I'm just a little bit surprised to see that the industrial uses are on the ground floor and the retail is on the second floor. And I wonder what does that do to the viability of any retail? And what does industrial uses on the ground floor do to the streetscape on the streets?
I can certainly share that with the applicant so they can kind of better respond to their thinking behind, you know, what uses went on to each, each floor.
It's interesting because in the context of other applications, we wanted to make sure that there was access to a loading berth for the industry on the ground floor, but you are right that the retail is what keeps the streetscape more vibrant generally.
Yeah, I remember, I forget which one it was, but we had another proposal where the street facade became completely blank because it was industrial use.
Right, that was the Greenpoint Manufacturing and Design Center, the keeper out in Brooklyn. Other comments? Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
The fifth item on our agenda is a referral of a modification to a previously approved authorization and a new authorization in Staten Island Community District Two. Our presenter is George Todorovic.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I will be presenting the application for two seven two zero Highland Boulevard. Next slide, please. This is an application submitted by Park Tyson Associates LLC, seeking three land use actions, a non-ulear modification to a prior CPC approval, a CPC authorization per ZR thirty-six oh two three to waive parking lot landscaping requirements for a group parking facility, and a chair certification per ZR thirty-six five nine two for cross-axis connections in the borough of Staten Island. Next slide, please. Site is located along the southern border of Staten Island Community District Two, within the New Dorp neighborhood. The project area includes Highland Boulevard, which is a major commercial corridor in the district. Next slide, please. The project site is a large commercial shopping complex located in a C four-one district. Zoning districts in the surrounding area include additional C four-one districts as well as C eight one, R three X, R three one, and R three two districts. The site is located one block south of Highland Plaza, which is another large shopping complex and was part of a two thousand and eighteen CPC approval. And these two large shopping complexes are the southernmost anchors of the commercial corridor, which extends three miles north along Highland Boulevard towards the Verrazano Bridge. Next slide, please. This twelve-point-five-acre zoning lot was part of a prior CPC approval from two thousand and three to allow for a group parking facility in a C four-one district, which is required on any zoning lot greater than four acres. So the proposal from two thousand and three changed the use of a hardware store located in building A five since the nineteen sixties to a grocery store stop-and-shop, which still exists today. The prior approval authorized the overall parking lot layout, as well as a reduction in required parking from fourteen hundred spaces to seven hundred and three spaces, which is a forty-nine point nine-three percent reduction. And the site also complied with landscaping standards at the time of the approval in two thousand and three by voluntarily planting screening along Highland Boulevard, as well as some interior trees in the main parking area. Next slide, please. So the existing project site has frontage on three streets and includes eight existing carpets. The site currently includes eight one-story commercial buildings totaling approximately one hundred and fifty thousand commercial square feet for your point two eight FAR and seven hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces. Of the eight commercial buildings, five are larger attached structures, buildings A one through A five. Two are smaller structures, buildings B one and B two, and one is completely detached, building B. Changes to the site since the prior approval do include an interim parking area, which replaced a portion of building A five and the demolition of building C, which is now vacant land surrounded by construction fencing. So the existing commercial uses include the previously approved grocery store, medical offices, several restaurants, a department store in two banks. Next slide. Now, for some more context, photograph one faces the northern side of the previously demolished building C. Photograph two shows the southern side of that vacant area, looking towards Highland Boulevard. And photograph three is facing the main area of the shopping complex with the majority of the parking lot in the foreground. Next slide. Photograph four faces the curb cut located on Tyson's Lane with the previously approved grocery store on the left. Photograph five shows the interim parking area adjacent to building A five. And lastly, building six shows the loading areas and alleyways in the rear of the site. Next slide. Now we'll detail the CPC land use actions, which include a non-uular modification of a prior CPC approval and a CPC authorization to waive parking lot landscaping. Next slide, please. The first part of the application is the non-uular modification for a new retail tenant, specifically a Starbucks for building C, to utilize the prior approved square footage of building C and introduce a new drive-through. The drive-through would modify circulation and parking spaces around building C, and a few spaces are proposed for relocation to other area of, air, other areas of the site in order to maintain compliance with the minimum parking requirements. Next slide. So to quickly detail the proposed modifications, building C includes the introduction of a drive-through for retail use, changing a one, two-way drive aisle to a one-way drive aisle, and the relocation of previously approved parking spaces, eight spaces highlighted in red, and seven spaces to be located elsewhere on the site. Next slide. Modifications near building D include a reduced drive aisle due to the addition of parking spaces adjacent to the drive aisle. Next slide. Modifications in the rear of building A three and A four include the introduction of new striping and dedicated areas of maneuverability for loading, as well as additional parking along one of the parking stalls. Next slide. Modifications near building B one and B two include additional parking spaces along Ebbets Avenue, as well as adjacent to building two. Next slide. And lastly, one modification is requested along Tyson's Lane to remove one twenty-four-foot curb cut from the prior CPC approval. Next slide, please. And the second part of the application is seeking approval for an interim site plan, which requires an open parking area adjacent to building A five. This interim parking area triggers the requirement for parking lot landscaping, which, as noted earlier, came into effect following the prior CPC approval. So under this proposal, the interim parking area would comply with all of the parking lot landscaping standards, and the authorization to waive standards would be sought for select areas within the larger parking lot, which is vested from the two thousand and three approval. Next slide. So although parking lot landscaping standards do not exist at the time of the prior approval, the following image shows planting, which was voluntarily provided as part of the prior approval in blue, compared to newly proposed planting in red. The applicant is providing landscaping on the balance of the larger parking area to the greatest extent possible, while also maintaining compliance with other parking requirements for the existing uses. So in summary, the applicant is requesting a waiver of perimeter landscaping requirements by providing four-foot landscape strips with thirty-seven perimeter trees, a waiver of interior landscaping requirements by providing twenty-seven interior trees with three additional islands. And lastly, a waiver of engineered absorption requirements by providing raised curb islands six inches in height, planted with salt-tolerant juniper to drain directly into the landscaped islands. Next slide. So in closing, those are the land use actions for this application. Non-uular modification of a prior CPC approval, CPC authorization to waive parking lot landscaping, and a chair certification for cross-access connections. And now we can take any questions. Thank you very much.
Question from the commission. Commissioner Sirlo.
Thank you. And I realize this is being referred, so it'll be interesting to see what the community board has to say when, when, when this is to them. So let me just ask a question because the way this is obviously being presented, and when, when I look at the materials, you know, it's framed that due to changes made throughout the years, a number of the existing site conditions today, different than from what they were when the site plan was originally approved. So, and, and, and I was not here in two thousand and three when this was approved, so I, I don't have any recollection, obviously, of, of how this came through the process last. But I guess I'm, my sort of overarching question is how much of the site, the differences in, in the conditions of the site were created by the applicant themselves in the process versus dealing with changes in the site? And, and again, I'm not weighing in on whether or not this is good or not. I'm just trying to understand how the site got to the place it is today where these actions are necessary. If, you know, there's a new type of tenant and they want to accommodate a new type of tenant, I understand that. But any kind of information you could provide on that would be helpful.
Right. Yeah, it's, it, the chronology is a little bit confusing. And there's more detailed information in the full land use application within the findings and project description. But the, the two main changes are the interim parking area, which is on the southern facade of building A five, and the demolition of building C. And, and for full disclosure, you know, the, the built, the demolition of building C in DOB's eyes was flagged as a notice. One could say it's a little bit premature, but I will let the applicant speak to that later. But we have been in conversations with DOB. DOB is aware, and that was flagged as a new building permit for DOB, but in terms of zoning, it's a net zero since they are using the previous footprint, which is thirty-four hundred square feet. And that is a net zero development. So those are the two, building C, which is no longer existing, and the interim parking area, which is changed from the prior approval.
And so the, the access point for the drive-through that will be created is now going to be Highland Boulevard? And they are eliminating the Tyson's Lane sort of entrance or exit point?
There, there's only one curb cut being removed on Tyson's Lane. There are no curb cuts being removed on Highland Boulevard. I think that slide eleven shows it best, but the only changes in circulation around building C would be the introduction of the drive-through and the change from a one-way, sorry, the change from a two-way drive aisle to a one-way drive aisle.
I'm sorry, I, I just, I just wonder.
There's no, no curb cut changes or removal of curb cuts on Highland Boulevard.
No, but, but I guess the reason I raise that issue is because vehicles that had the option of entering or exiting on Tyson's Lane will no longer, since the curb cut will no, no longer be there. And I'm assuming that then they would be required to use a curb cut on Highland Boulevard. I mean, that's an assumption I'm making unless, that, that's the reason I'm raising that.
Okay, can we go to slide fifteen, please? So these two curb cuts are too close to each other based on today's standards. There will still be a curb cut for loading. You can see it's fifty-five feet wide, the existing curb cut to remain. And, and one curb cut that was previously approved will, will be removed. And, and there's also a curb cut further down Tyson's, which is the twenty-three-foot curb cut. So there are still access points on all three sides of the frontage of the project site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It, it's just Ebbets, Tyson's, and Highland. There will be access on all three sides.
Okay, and I guess the, the change in the width of the lanes, and, and, and I don't know, you know, how this all began back in two thousand and three. But i- in a situation like that, do we communicate with or, or is the fire department, for example, part of the process of reviewing that type of proposal, given that, you know, there are fire lanes in a shopping center, there's access points, the fact that this is going from, say, two lanes to one lane, is that an issue for them? Or is, are they, you know, just naturally a part of the process that reviews this, and by the time it's getting to us or out to the community board, it's, there is some indication that at least those public safety concerns are not issues for the agency?
Mm-hmm. We, we have brought this, and again, this application's been with us for three years. I think your first question was about two thousand and three. And I will say that back in two thousand and three, I assume, even though I might have to refresh my memory in the, in the records, but I assume it did have to comply with FDNY standards back then, and we have brought it over the past three years to our joint review meetings with DOB and FDNY. And, and the, the drive aisles still comply with minimum width standards. They're just being removed since there was in excess of aisle widths. So they still comply with the minimum standards required in zoning. And, and I assume for FDNYs, but we can, we can double-check with that.
Sure. I mean, I would be interested just to ensure that there wasn't a reason there were, there was a increase in the width at one ti- at, at originally, that now, without our knowledge, is being reduced to yet while legal width, it, it may not be something that, it may be taking away something that was originally desired by the community or by someone else in the land use process, including this commission back in the day. I, I don't know. So, yeah, anything you could find, and again, I'd be interested. So, yeah, anything you could find, and again, I'd, I'd be interested in, in seeing what the, the community board has to say post-referral. So, thank, thank you.
We, we can also include, for the commissioners, the original two thousand and three approval by the department. Or, or by the commission, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cirillo, Capelli.
People confuse us all the time.
Particularly with your masks.
On the slide that you had, the blue dots and the red dots to indicate the, in parking lot landscaping. My question is, in terms of this waiver, in terms of this waiver that they're seeking, can we get a cheat sheet that shows what they would be required to do without the waiver, and what they're gonna end up doing, and whether it's a plus or minus in terms of landscaping in that parking lot?
Yes, we could definitely provide that. So you can see the net difference. The interim parking area that is triggering these requirements fully complies. They are providing to the maximum extent possible engineered, the engineered stormwater absorption requirements, in layman's terms, are just bio swells. But that would be extremely difficult. Well, I don't wanna speak for the applicant, but they will have to, they would have to provide those, and as, as they said, they're providing resilient vegetation, six-inch curb heights.
George, what I wanna call out is that the, the area on the right, which is triggering the need for, that's where the change is occurring. That area accords with today's parking requirements. What has happened is, since the parking was built, our parking requir- our, our landscaping requirements changed. They are changing the area on the right, where you see all of the red dots and just a little, a few blue dots. But because this is all one zoning lot, making the change there triggers today's landscaping requirements for the entire area, including the areas that aren't being touched. And so, certainly for me, that's when it clicked, that on the area that they are changing, they're meeting today's requirements. On the others, it would require the elimination of a ton of, a major reworking. And so what we did was work with them over the past three years to get as much good new landscaping, recognizing that they initially were grandfathered, they're touching one fragment of it, but the requirements, because of how the zoning works, would apply. And so that's why it struck us as the department, that this is why the waiver authorization was created to address it.
The other question I have, yes, thank you, that is helpful. The other question I have is in terms of the elimination of curb cut on Tyson. That's a very funny lot there, and Commissioner Cirillo and I may disagree, but I would prefer there be more egress from the Tyson Avenue side as opposed to the Highland Boulevard side, which is terrible with traffic, which is pulling out into a dedicated bus lane. And so I would not wanna be doing something that would force people out into Highland Boulevard.
Commissioner Otis?
Your, your previous explanation, I think, may have made this question moot, but, you know, one, one thing I wanted to understand, you know, and is really some of the flooding, I mean, obviously, the loss of permeable area. If we, if, if that is what it is, I, I understand that they're trying to now make sure that it's, it, it's a, you know, in compliance. Right? But, you know, I wonder if this area has some issues with flooding at all? You know, when I looked at the flood hazard mapper, it shows that three sides are really flood prone. And so I think we need to be particularly cognizant of, you know, preventing folks from complying with rules that are intended to create more permeable surface that would address flood concerns.
The applicant actually did provide a WRP report, even though it's not technically within the coastal zone that requires WRP, but Waterfront has reviewed WRP, so we could provide that information, if that helps.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I, you mentioned, you know, having trees that are resilient, but I think we're, we also need to think about permeable surface. And, and, you know, so that's the concern that this is raising for me now.
And I do believe that it is, to a certain degree, addressed by the fact that the new impermeable surface, way over on the upper right-hand side, that is being designed to today's standards. It's just that the balance of it with new impermeable surface is not being added, is not being retrofitted up to today's standards.
And that's an issue given climate concerns and flooding in this area.
I think that's the real question in granting the waiver, if by providing the additional spaces up to today's standards, do we think it appropriate to require bringing the entirety of the balance, which is untouched up to today's standards? That, that really is the, the, what underlies the request for the waiver. Commissioner, you do?
If I understand, if I understand correctly, other than the Starbucks space, they're not really doing much else to, and the corner.
And the upper right-hand corner.
Right, right, aside from that, I'm sorry. But for the balance of the space, other than Starbucks, nothing else is being done. So, I, so the rest of it would have been grandfathered if this weren't being
Exactly.
touched. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So you can see why, why it took a while for this to come to the commission, it's a small thing, but it, important questions are being posed here. And we will benefit, as you had presaged, Commissioner Cirillo, from the views of the community. If there aren't any other questions, then we will refer this to the community board for sixty days.
Okay, the sixth item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and referral of a zoning tax amendment in Queens Community District Ten. Our presenter is Joy Razer. I'm gonna note that Commissioner Rampershot has recused on this item.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners. Next slide, please. This is a private application for a zoning map amendment from an R three A to an R six B zoning district with a C two-three overlay, as well as a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area in South Ozone Park, Queens, Community District Ten. Next slide. Here you can see the existing land use and zoning in the surrounding area. In two thousand and thirteen, the project area was rezoned from R three-two to an R three A zoning district through the adoption of the ozone park rezoning, which affected five hundred and thirty blocks in community districts nine and ten. The purpose of the rezoning was to reinforce neighborhood character through lower density and contextual zoning districts, direct a modest amount of new development opportunities to major corridors and transit hubs, and reflect existing land use patterns through commercial overlays. An R six B C two-three district already exists north of the project area along Liberty Avenue, the area's major commercial corridor. Liberty Avenue is lined with two-to-three-story mixed-use buildings, which includes small restaurants, offices, and other local businesses. South of the project area is zoned R three A and R three-two, and is primarily comprised of detached single and two-family homes. Next slide. Here's an aerial of the surrounding area, and I want to note that in this image, north is to the right. The project area is indicated in black with the development site outlined in red. The development site is improved with a two-and-a-half-story, single-family residential building that's built to an FAR of point three, and this is owned by the applicant. The area is loosely bounded by Liberty Avenue to the north, the Van Wyk Expressway Service Road to the east, and one hundred and thirty-fifth Street to the west. Next slide. Photos one, two, and three show the project area facing northwest and southwest from the Van Wyk Expressway Service Road. The service road provides access to the Van Wyk Expressway, which is the area's major arterial road connecting Queens and the Bronx. Next slide. Photos four, five, and six provide additional context facing southwest and southwest from the service road. And in photo four, you can most clearly see the two-and-a-half-story building that exists on the site today. Next slide. The applicant is proposing a four-story, twenty-two-thousand-square-foot building containing eighteen dwelling units, five to six of which would be made affordable pursuant to MIH. The ground floor would contain approximately eight thousand square feet of commercial space, and thirteen parking spaces would be available in the cellar for residential tenants. The development would contain an FAR of two-point-two and rise to a height of forty-five feet. Next slide. Here's the ground floor plan of the development, with the entrance to the retail space indicated in red, and the residential lobby indicated in yellow. You can also see the ramp down to the cellar parking provided at grade via a new curb cut along the Van Wyk Expressway Service Road. Next slide. Thirteen spaces would be provided in the cellar with elevator access provided to the upper floors. And you can also see that bike parking would be available in the cellar as well. Next slide. Here's a sample floor plan of floors two through four, which would contain an even mix of studios, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Next slide. The applicant is proposing two actions, including a zoning map amendment from an R three A to an R six B C two-three districts. R six B districts provide medium density and a maximum residential FAR of two-point-two, as well as a commercial FAR of two-point-oh. As mentioned, an R six B district with a C two-three overlay is already mapped north of the project area along Liberty Avenue, and that's comprised of mixed-use buildings and local retail. Next slide. The applicant is also seeking a zoning text amendment to map MIH, MIH options one and two. Option one would provide twenty-five percent of residential floor area, an average of sixty percent AMI, or roughly sixty-one thousand dollars annually for a family of three. Option two would provide thirty percent of residential floor area, an average of eighty percent AMI, or roughly eighty-one thousand dollars for a family of three. Next slide. In summary, the applicant is seeking two actions, a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from R three A to an R six B C two-three district, as well as a text amendment to establish an MIH area. The proposed development would rise to a height of forty-five feet, and would include eighteen dwelling units, ground floor commercial space, and thirteen cellar parking spaces. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joy. Questions? Well then, the applicant is certified.
Thank you.
The seventh item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map amendment and referral of a zoning tax amendment in Queens Community District Four. Our presenter is Kathy Ko.
Good afternoon, commission. So this is forty-five twenty, eighty-third Street rezoning. Next slide, please. It's a private application in the Elmhurst neighborhood of Queens Community District Four, and the application is for a zoning map amendment from an M one-one district to an R seven-eight district, and a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area to facilitate a nine-story residential building, and would also permit a new charter school as of right. Next slide, please. The proposed project area is in Elmhurst, which is located in central Queens, and it's one block west of Broadway, which is a prominent commercial corridor in this part of Elmhurst, and the southern boundary of the project area is adjacent to the Long Island Railroad Port Washington branch. The project area is located within the transit zone, and the Elmhurst Avenue MR subway station is located one block northeast. And the area is also well-served by local buses that primarily run, run down Broadway. Next slide, please. The proposed project area is located in an M one-one district, which is mapped in nineteen sixty-one. It's bounded by Forty-seventh Avenue and Eighty-second Street to the west, and Eighty-third Street and Whitney Avenue to the east, all of which are narrow streets. The surrounding area consists of a mix of residential, commercial, and community facility uses. Directly north and east of the project area along Broadway, which is a wide eighty-foot road, is mapped R seven A, and is developed with six, seven-story buildings with ground, ground floor retail, as well as single-story commercial buildings. Directly north of the project area on the subject block is a pair of recently-built eight-story residential buildings that contain ground floor retail, mapped with a C two-three overlay in the R seven-eight district. And west of the project area is mapped R six B, and is mostly consisting of three-story residences and seven-to-ten-story multifamily buildings northwest of the project, project area. Moving south of the Long Island Railroad, the area is zoned M one-one and consists of single-story warehouses and auto-related shops, as well as the PS seven elementary school. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning area consists of block fifteen thirty-six, lots eighty and two, two-twenty-three, which make up the development site that are outlined in red. Next slide. Which shows the tax map soon further in, to see the remainder of the lots that make up the project area, which is outlined in black, with an aerial to help visualize. So, lot seventy-nine, which is currently a surface parking lot, part of lot seventy-five, which is developed with a three-story residence, part of lot eighty-five, which includes the railroad bed owned by the Long Island Railroad, and part of the condo lots that make up former lot two fifteen, which is just north of the development site. And the project area has unique corner frontages on Forty-seventh Avenue and Eighty-second Street to the west, and Whitney Avenue and Eighty-third Street to the east. Next slide, please. Here we see current uses within the proposed development site, which include a surface parking lot and a one-story vacant warehouse north of the proposed development site, or two newly constructed eight-story buildings with ground floor retail and a single-story food court, and other smaller food establishments that are fronting Forty-Fifth Avenue. Directly east of the project area is a shopping center with a supermarket and local restaurants. North of the subject block is the more hamstid playground, and the Elmhurst Avenue MR station is located on the eastern side of the playground on Broadway. And the southern boundary of the lot is adjacent, again, to the Long Island Railroad, rightfully. Next slide, please. And here we have some site photos showing views of the proposed development site from Eighty-second Street and Forty-Fifth Avenue, which is, again, the western portion of the site. The blue arrow shows a view of the east side of Eighty-second Street with the development site straight ahead, and the newly-built eight-story building to the, on the right. I'm sorry. That's on the left. The blue arrow shows a view of the east side of Eighty-second Street with the development site straight ahead, and the newly-built bu- building north of the development site on the right there. And the purple arrow shows a southeast view of the adjacent new building and the existing surface parking lot. And the green arrow shows a view of the development site looking south on Forty-Fifth Avenue. Next slide, please. And here we have views of the eastern side of the development site from Eighty-third Street and Whitney Avenue. The blue arrow shows a view looking north from Whitney Avenue, with the development site on the left and the more hamstid playground straight ahead. The purple arrow is a view southwest of the development site from Eighty-third Street. And the green arrow shows a southwest view of the development site on the right and the Long Island Railroad straight ahead. Next slide, please. So, a BSA action was pursued prior to this application to allow a school in an M one-one district. The proposed map amendment would permit, permit the, the planned charter school as of right in an R seven A. The applicant was granted by the BSA in June twenty twenty to allow a four-story sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-four square-foot charter school at an FAR of one-point-four-two. And the applicant proposes to convert and enlarge the eastern portion of the existing warehouse building into the school. The Renaissance Charter School would occupy the building in the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three school year and serve kindergarten through sixth grades. And on the western portion of the site, the applicant proposes a new nine-story residential building at a height of ninety feet. It would total approximately one hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-three square feet at an FAR three-point-one-eight. And the applicant proposes to build approximately one hundred and sixty-three new dwelling units, of which forty-one to forty-nine would be affordable under MIH options one and two. The building would provide seventy-two parking spaces in the cellar, and that would be accessed by a reduced curb cut on Forty-seventh Avenue. Next slide, please. So here on this proposed site plan, you can see the ground floor layout with the proposed residential building on the western side and the charter school on the east. The residential portion rises to sixty, I'm sorry, six stories fronting Forty-seventh Avenue, and the neighboring residential buildings to, to the west of the site, and then rises to nine stories. And there's a building overhang on the eastern side, as it transitions to the school portion, where you can see the roof on the second story, and which, and that building rises to four stories. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. On this ground floor site plan of the residential portion, you can see that access to the residential lobby and cellar parking would be located on Forty-seventh Avenue. And in addition to residential units, the ground floor would consist of a fitness center, a lounge, a mailroom, and access to an interior courtyard. Next slide, please. And on the ground floor site plan for the school, we see three entrances in school located on Eighty-third Street. There would be forty-four classrooms in the building located on floors one through three, a cafeteria and kitchen on the ground floor, and the gym would be located on the, on the fourth floor. Next slide, please. And the sections show that setbacks would be provided at the sixth floor or at sixty-one feet on the residential building before rising to ninety feet. And setbacks would be provided at the second floor or twenty-one feet for the school before rising to a height of approximately sixty-four feet. There would be an interior courtyard available on the ground floor for the residential building and a courtyard on the ground floor as well, as well as on the roof of the first floor in the school building. Next slide, please. So to facilitate this development, the applicant proposes to rezone the property from an M one-one district to an R seven-eight district, which unlocks residential use and according to the applicant, better suits the areas medium-density zoning districts north of the Long Island Railroad right-of-way and the community's access to transit. It also reflects land use patterns of the recently developed eight-story mixed-use buildings directly north of the site. Next slide, please. The applicant also proposes a zoning text amendment to establish an M I H area and the applicant proposes to map options one and two. The A M I for the Elmhurst Massbeth N T A is roughly sixty-one thousand and the A M I for community district four is roughly forty-nine thousand. Next slide, please. The following slides will show renderings of the proposed development. Here we have an illustrative rendering looking east from Forty-seventh Avenue. You can see the proposed residential building straight ahead and the existing eight-story mixed-use building just to the left of it. Next slide, please. And here we have a view looking south from Eighty-second Street with a proposed development site straight ahead and the existing eight-story building on the left. Next slide. And here we have a view looking northeast from the elevated Long Island Railroad tracks with both the residential building in view, but the school just passed it in red. Next slide, please. And here we have an illustrative rendering of a view facing southwest from Whitney Avenue with the proposed charter school in view, the Long Island Railroad tracks are to the left and the existing eight-story building is to the right of the school. Next slide, please. Here we have an elevated view facing southwest, the Long Island Railroad, just beyond the proposed school. Next slide. And finally, we have a view facing west with the Long Island Railroad tracks to the left, the proposed school to the right of the tracks, and you can see the residential building just beyond the school. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions? Commissioner Vamprashad.
Yes, I actually have two questions. With regards to the charter school, how many proposed students?
There would be three hundred and twenty-four students and forty-six staff members.
So that leaves me with the next question. Along Eighty-third Street, it's fifty feet wide, but it's very narrow. I've been down that street and it's very tight. Will, has the applicant discussed with D O T about making a, creating a drop-off zone and making the whole street like no standing because it's very tight with all the trucks from the, I guess, I don't know if it's a supermarket across the street, but they line up and they have a lot of their pallets and so forth always out in the street, so it's very tight to get by.
Yeah, and the applicant has been working very closely with D O T and the Transportation Division on working through a workable traffic pattern for the site. And we can make sure that the applicant's ready to speak to that in, in more detail when this comes back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, yeah, really good point because student drop-off, I mean, I can, I know that intersection too, it's really miserable. And, and I, I'm happy to see it's Renaissance Charter School. I was a former board member many years ago. So it's great to see them have a home. Just some quick questions on parking. So one hundred and sixty-three units, of which up to forty-nine would be affordable, and seventy-two parking spaces, are those all for those residents? Is there some parking for the charter school? You know, where do teachers park? Often there is a need for that. I'm in a neighborhood.
Right, so those parking, parking spaces are for residential units. I believe it's envisioned that most employees would be taking public transit to the site since it is a pretty transit-rich neighborhood.
With a lot of parking at this location. And then, um, the bike storage. So I noted that there were eighty-two bike spaces. It would be great to have more bike storage at, at this spot. I know they're probably complying with the requirements, but I just think we have seen so, such an increase. This is my neighborhood, you know, we've seen an increase in bike usage and utilization and I'm not sure what the ratio is. It seems like it's, you know, about half, half of the units would get one spot. That seems woefully inadequate for the ways in which, you know, people are using bikes these days in a location like that, I would imagine it would be helpful.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, so this is the last of the projects to be certified before we turn to the pre-hearing portion of the meeting.
Thank you.
The eighth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District Two. Our presenter is Teal Daly.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide, please. This is a private application sought by Woodside Sixty-three Management LLC and Mara Nostrum Elements for a new building that would be located in the Woodside neighborhood of Queens Community District Two. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing buildings to construct a new thirteen-story mixed-use residential building that would be pursuant to quality housing regulations. The proposed building would have a total of approximately two hundred twelve thousand square feet of floor area and would contain residential, commercial, and community facility uses. There would be a total of approximately seventy-three thousand gross square feet of commercial floor area for retail and office uses that would be located in the cellar, ground floor, and second floor. There would be approximately seven thousand five hundred gross square feet of community facility space that would be located in the cellar in the ground floor and is intended to be used for performing art. And approximately one hundred sixty-three thousand square feet of residential floor area would be located on the third through thirteenth floors and would include two hundred thirteen dwelling units, fifty-four of which would be affordable. The most recent unit mix provided by the applicant includes twenty-five percent studios, fifty percent one-bedroom, and twenty-five percent two-bedroom units. This unit mix, however, is likely to change as the applicant responds to a community board request for more family-sized units. The building would have a total F A R of five point nine-nine and reach a maximum height of one hundred thirty-five feet. Next slide, please. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is seeking approval of a zoning map amendment that would change the existing R six and R six with a C one-four overlay zoning districts to a C four-four zoning district, as well as a zoning text amendment for mandatory inclusionary housing, which would map options one and two. Next slide. On June third, Community Board Two voted to approve this application with conditions. The vote was twenty-nine in favor, five against, with one exception, and the conditions included deeper affordability for the residential units, making the community facility space available to arts groups for affordable rental rates on a permanent basis, adding E V charging stations, ride-share parking, and bicycle storage in the parking garage, marketing of the commercial space to minority-owned businesses, helping existing commercial tenants with reoccupation or relocation, the use of union labor for building maintenance and operations, the purchase and setup of an N Y C mesh network hub for the provision of wireless internet, as well as the installation of solar panels, and an overall design for energy efficiency. These conditions emerged from the applicant's engagement with Community Board Two before certification, as well as several presentations given leading up to the vote. The applicant has agreed to these conditions and responded to the community board in writing with a letter to confirm their commitment to the conditions. Next slide. Borough President Richards held a public hearing on June tenth for this application and approved the application with conditions that are largely in alignment with the community board. These conditions include the deeper affordability for residential units, providing community facility space for local groups at affordable rental rates, inclusion of alternative transportation options, support of local businesses in the new commercial space, use of union labor for maintenance and operations, and a mix of union and non-union labor for construction, installation of the network hub for wireless internet, designing the building for sustainability and energy efficiency, and local hiring that includes minority and women-owned business enterprises. The applicant also sent the commitment letter to the borough president and the borough president and community boards who have reinforced their agreed-upon commitments of the applicant and these conditions have been approved. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Teal. Commissioner Vamprashad.
Since agreeing to the conditions, has the applicant provided revised plans reflecting the location of the solar panels, the E V charging, the E V charging stations, and so forth? If so, can you please have it forwarded to us?
They have not provided plans, but I can certainly ask them for them and they can potentially share them at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll see this at our public hearing on Wednesday.
The ninth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District Two. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Great, you can proceed to slide two. This is a private application sought by the Teamsters filed as forty-eight eighteen Property Holdings LLC, seeking approval of a zoning map amendment to facilitate a four-story enlargement to an existing two-story commercial building in Long Island City neighborhood of Queens Community District Two. Next slide. The proposed enlargement would result in a hundred forty-nine thousand gross square foot building across all six floors, an additional ninety-four thousand square feet of office space, record storage, and meeting space on floors three through six. The ground floor would contain twenty-three thousand square feet of retail fronting Van Dam Street and a two thousand square foot union-affiliated training space. The existing second floor could be, would be converted to an approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet of permitted off-street parking. Parking is not required, but the applicant is providing forty-nine spaces it believes will be utilized. The illustrative renderings above are of the proposed enlargement. On the top, looking northwest from the intersection of Van Dam Street and Hundreds Point Avenue, and on the bottom, a view of Van Dam, of the Van Dam frontage facing south. Van Dam Street is a major north-south arterial that connects Blissville, a mixed-use community with over six hundred residents to the south and Queens Boulevard to the north. The building would have a Mac, a total F A R of four point zero oh eight and reach a maximum height of eighty-five feet. The applicant is also proposing an approximately eight hundred square foot private open space along Hundreds Point Avenue. Next slide. In order to facilitate the proposed enlargement, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment changing the existing M two-one district to M one-five. M one-five districts permit a maximum F A R of five point zero for commercial and community, excuse me, commercial and manufacturing uses and an F A R of six point five for community facility uses. Per the applicant, the proposed building contains several union-related uses that would be consistent with this running area, including the Long Island City I V Z, and will create the potential for new job creation in Long Island City. The densest block would reflect similar-sized buildings in the surrounding area, be approximate to public transportation, and would provide additional office space for the greater Long Island City community. Next slide. Community Board Two recommended approval by unanimous vote of thirty-five, four, zero, against with the following conditions: to incorporate artists, local artist work on the interior or exterior of the new building, particularly the lotline walls, to allow local organizations to utilize the meeting space to install electric vehicle chargers in the parking lot, to add additional bicycle parking lots on the outside of the building, to market retail space to minority and women-owned businesses, and to participate in the Long Island City storefront program. This is a program that allows empty storefronts to be occupied by pop-up shops and artists. Next slide. Queens Borough President voted on July, recommended approval on July twenty-first, echoing the same conditions made by Community District Two. Again, the only difference here was explicitly asking for them to work with New York City Department Parks and area residents on the design and function of the proposed open space. That concludes the presentation and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, I, I find it striking that they're already concerned about vacancies at this location. Could you, you know, in looking at the land use map, I, I don't see much commercial around it. Could you sort of speak to just what their commercial rationale is?
Yeah, so the, so the immediate area is void of, of many commercial opportunities. So what they see is an opportunity to provide commercial opportunities specifically for the community Blissville to the south, which is, which has a sizable residential community, and they don't have many opportunities for retail use. So they see this as filling part of that void and also serving the, the, the day traffic of many of the offices and manufacturing businesses in the area. So that's, and I expect them also to sort of elaborate that during the public hearing.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, another item for our public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The tenth item on our agenda is a non-ular proposed referral of a renewal to previously approved special permits. Our presenter is Connor Clark. Connor, you're muted. Stephen, can you just?
Yeah.
Yeah, this isn't a big presentation anyway, though.
Yeah. So this is a private application by the W R Y Tenant LLC for an authorization pursuant to section eleven forty-three of the zoning resolution to renew special permits for two accessory garages, totaling sixteen hundred spaces at the Western Rail Yards in Community District Four in Manhattan. The application was referred to Community Board on June tenth, twenty twenty-one, and is back to the City Planning Commission for a vote. The special permits were originally granted in two thousand and nine under the previously existing thirteen-five-six-one zoning regulations. These are the pre-Manhattan Core parking regulations that were passed in two thousand and thirteen. Section eleven forty-three allows special permits to be renewed for two additional three-year terms if the vax upon which the special permits were granted have not substantially changed. After acquiring the development site from the M T A in two thousand and fourteen, the applicant obtained its first renewal in two thousand and eighteen and is now seeking their second renewal. Next slide, please. The Western Rail Yards, the development site, is the as-yet undeveloped Sub-District F of the Hudson Yards Development located on lots one and five of block six seventy-six and outlined in the white dotted line on this photo. It is bounded by West Thirty and Thirty-third Street on the south and north sides and Eleventh and Twelfth avenues on the east and west sides. The parking facilities would be accessory to an estimated five point seven million square foot mixed-use development with approximately three point eight to four point eight million square feet of residential use, one point five to two point two million square feet of commercial office and/or hotel use, and two hundred and ten thousand square feet of retail space, of one hundred and twenty thousand square feet foot public school, and five point four acres of publicly accessible open space. The north and south parking garage would have a, uh, there are two sites. The north and south parking garage sites are roughly outlined in the photo in red in the two rectangular sizes. The north parking garage would have a maximum capacity of eleven hundred spaces and the south garage a maximum of eight hundred, but the overall maximum for both garages would be capped at sixteen hundred spaces. A maximum of two hundred and seventy spaces would be allowed to be accessory to the commercial uses. Next slide, please. So the development site is located in an underlying C six-four zoning district within Sub-District F of the Hudson Yards, Special Hudson Yards District. Sub-District F encompasses the western half of the M T A's west-side yard, which will be the site of the mixed-use development on a platform covering the rail yard. The northernmost section of the high line runs along the western and southern edges of the project area along Twelfth Avenue and West Thirty Street respectively. The Javis Convention Center is located one block north of the development site and most of the existing Hudson Yards development is located to the east and north. The M thirty-four S B S and M twelve buses both serve the development site. Thirty-Ninth Street Ferry Terminal is located five blocks to the north and the Thirty-Fourth Street Hudson Yard seven train is located less than a block to the east. Next slide, please. As outlined in Section 93052, the Hudson Yards parking regulations do not apply in Sub-District F where the development site is located. Instead, the regulations in Article 1, Section 3 apply. Next slide, please. These photos show the development site as it currently exists. The photo on the left is the view looking west from across 11th Avenue, and the photo on the right is looking east from across 12th Avenue. Since construction has not begun, both photos show the empty space over the existing train yard. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the two proposed garages with entrances circled in red. The north garage would have entrances on West 33rd Street and a northern road, and the south garage would have entrances on West 30th Street and Southern Road. Next slide, please. These drawings show the layout of the north garage with the plaza level on top and the cellar level on bottom. Cars would either access via the plaza level via the northern road entrance or the cellar level via the West 33rd Street entrance. The maximum 1,100 spaces are assumed in these drawings, and the required 50 reservoir spaces are split between the two entrances. Next slide. So these drawings show the layout of the south garage with the plaza level on top and the cellar level on the bottom. Drivers would access parking only on the cellar level via the either entrance. Again, the maximum 800 spaces are assumed here, and the 40 reservoir spaces are split between the two entrances. Connor, are you on? Do you want to take it from here?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. We can go to the next slide. So the Community Board for Executive Committee met on June 28th and voted unanimously to disapprove the renewal. In addition, CB4 voted to disapprove both the initial special permit applications in 2009 as well as their first renewal in 2018. In the letter issued for the current renewal, the board argued that the facts have changed since the original special permits were issued. Specifically, they reiterated from their 2018 disapproval letter that the data originally used to determine the number of spaces is now out of date due to changes in car ownership rates, increased use of ride-sharing, and expansion of public transit to Hudson Yards. The board stated that if the renewal does not get issued, they would like, they would like 200 spaces to be reserved for teachers and EMS workers at no charge. In addition, they reiterated their 2018 request that the number of spaces be reduced from 1,600 to 1,300, that a restrictive declaration be issued to ensure the garage is only used for accessory parking, that space be allocated for garbage disposal, and that the Community Board be allowed to evaluate the design of the garage before it is built. The applicant submitted a response letter to the CPC on July 23rd, which was included in your briefing package. The applicant argued that the facts upon which the special permits were granted have not substantially changed, and that the applicant would engage with CB4 regarding the design and operation of the facilities. Next slide. Section 1143 indicates that special permits may be renewed for two, three, two additional three-year terms if the facts have not substantially changed. The original special permit took effect on December 21st, 2009. Since the property was leased to the applicant on April 10th, 2014, this became the modified effective date. A three-year renewal was granted by the CPC in 2018, which expires this year. The current application would be the second and final three-year renewal. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from the Commission? Okay, then I would ask for an assent, to be able to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department saying that the special permit is extended for the last time for three years. Oh, please, please, Commissioner Bernie.
You know, the argument that nothing substantially has changed since 2009, I would not completely agree with. I mean, I think there's been a paradigm change in thinking about transit in the city, particularly in Manhattan. We're now soon to be having congestion pricing. We're promoting, we're discouraging car use, we're encouraging public transit, and I would have thought continuing to permit parking at this magnitude is not in the interest of the city.
Commissioner, I actually had the same reaction, and if we were looking back to 2009, but it was last renewed in 2018, and given the fact that this is the last renewal of the permit, I actually became comfortable that the finding, which is that facts have not substantially changed since April of 2018, were it from 2009, I would, I would agree.
So the renewal is for how long?
For three years.
And then what happens at the end of that three years?
Our anticipation is that there will be significant discussions about the future of the Western Rail Yards and whether the, there are approved plans for the Western Rail Yards, but one can anticipate that since those approvals occurred many years ago that they may choose to update them through a new public process coming through us.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I would also add that the applicant rep may confirm that they have not secured funding for the project yet at this stage. So there's some question, as they're still trying to secure funding, but they haven't yet even gotten the funding to start, so that's the status of the project.
Okay. Thank you. On to the next one.
Did we get the assent by shorthand?
Oh, I thought we had done that.
Yeah, all right.
No, thank you for keeping up in right order. Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah. The, the 11th item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning tax amendments, site selection, and acquisition of city-owned property in Manhattan, Community District Four. Our presenter is Sylvia Lee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're staying on the west side of Manhattan. Jeff, would you pull up the slide, please? As the Commission may recall, this is a joint application by various city agencies and a private applicant for 95 11th Avenue Owner Realty LLC to facilitate the development of a mixed-use building with housing, hotel, commercial space, and NYPD facility in Clinton Health Kitchen, Community District Four in Manhattan. Next slide, please. As shown on the area map, the site is located west of 11th Avenue with frontages along 11th Avenue, West 39th Street, and West 40th Streets adjacent to the Javits Center. North of the site is a two-story MTA bus depot. South of the site is a Port Authority Lincoln Tunnel ventilation structure. Across the street on the east side of 11th Avenue is the Lincoln Tunnel entrance ramp. The development site is located within an M15 zoning district, surrounded by adjacent M1, M2, and C64 zoning districts, as well as the Special Hudson Yards District and the Special Clinton District further to the north. The surrounding area contains a variety of uses, including commercial, residential, mixed-use, industrial, public transportation, a public facility, and transportation. Surrounding open spaces include Hudson River Park, Hudson Boulevard Park, and the High Line. The site is five blocks north of the Hudson Yard 7 train station and serviced by multiple bus lines as well, as well as the West Midtown Ferry Terminal and the Port Authority Bus Terminal. Next slide, please. Just a quick reminder here, as highlighted in red, the development site consists of approximately 25,000 square feet of unimproved lot area currently used by NYPD for parking. Next slide, please. As a reminder, the applicant is proposing an approximately 24 FAR mixed-use building. The new building would be comprised of a 57-story residential tower on the northern portion of the site and a slightly shorter 56-story hotel tower on the southern portion of the site. And the two towers are joined by a five-story commercial podium with an NYPD vehicle storage facility inside as well. I'll call out here that the development includes 275 affordable housing units as well as 75 supportive housing units. EDC and the developers will be able to provide additional information the Commission asked about on the housing program and supportive housing element at the hearing. Next slide, please. In order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicants are seeking a zoning map amendment, a zoning tax amendment, and a combined action for site selection and acquisition. I'll now go over each action in a bit more detail as a reminder. Next slide, please. First, the zoning map amendment. The applicant seeks to rezone the development site from an M15 zoning district to a C64 zoning district to allow a wider range of commercial, community facility, and residential uses so that the proposed development can include a supermarket and affordable housing uses as a rate. The application also seeks to map the development site within the Special Hudson Yards District. Next slide, please. And in conjunction with that remapping, the application seeks a tax amendment to establish a new Sub-District G within the Special Hudson Yards District to facilitate the proposed development. As listed here on this slide, the Sub-District G floor area use and bulk regulations are proposed to achieve the building program, facilitate better site planning, and in particular, to address unique constraints of the site, which sits adjacent to the Lincoln Tunnel vent structure and the Javits Center complex. The proposed tax amendment would also modify Appendix F to designate the site as an MIH area with options 1 and 2. I'll note here on the site plan that as part of the overall project, the development team is engaged with the community on designing a pedestrian-friendly landscaped open space with seating and with seating in the northern 30th foot, a 30-foot-wide portion of West 29th Street. It will be pursuant to revocable consent that will be sought after ULRP completion. Next slide, please. DCAST and NYPD are seeking a combined action for site selection and acquisition of approximately 39,000 square feet of the development site for use as an NYPD vehicle storage facility. Shown here, highlighted in blue, is the volume of the proposed storage facility. A fair share analysis was required and conducted. Next slide, please. The application was certified on April 19th, 2021, and referred out for Community Board and Borough President's review. CB4 voted unanimously to approve the application with the conditions related to affordable housing, supportive housing, and the plaza design at the building's 39th Street frontage. In its resolution, I'll note that CB4 commended the development team for working with the community and the board being accommodating and thoughtful in developing multiple iterations of the program and the building design. The Borough President also issued her recommendation to approve the project echoing the same conditions articulated by Community, Community, Community Board Four. Sorry. EDC and the developer will be at the hearing on Wednesday to provide responses to in these aspects. Next slide, please. NEIS was conducted by the Deputy Mayor of Housing and Economic Development as the lead agency. The ULRP hearing on Wednesday would also be a hearing on the DEIS. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Dweck?
There was a hotel component in the proposal?
Yes.
And would that? Yeah, go ahead.
It's in the southern tower.
Southern tower, correct.
Yes.
Correct, correct. So my, my question is, is there any further actions that will be needed? You know, we have this special hotel permit proposal coming in front of us, and I know it's not, it's not passed yet, but assuming that it does, what would be required, if anything, of this project based on that? Would that conflict?
No, so this, this proposed tax amendment and suite of actions would allow, once approved, would allow the hotel component of the project without additional hotel special permit.
So it would supersede any further, any, any?
Now, the, the text that is before the Commission as written has vesting provisions for anything that had prior approvals or applications here. So this would be covered by that provision in the, in the text.
That would be if it was built within a certain time, or?
I would have to check on that, although I, I will just say that I believe Jen is, is on the Zoom call and maybe, maybe know the answer to that question.
Right, the question was, would, would there be any further action, assuming this, this proposed project didn't get built in a timely manner? Would that, because once we do the rezoning, it says right, and then they can, they don't, there's no rush to do it today, but?
Yeah, we can check to see what the vesting provisions are, but there, there are, this would be covered in those vesting provisions.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll add this to the growing list of projects that will be on Wednesday's public hearing.
Thank you.
The 12th item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of zoning map and zoning tax amendments and a special permit in Manhattan, Community District Eight. Our presenter is Stephen Johnson. I will note that Commissioner Dweck is recused on this item.
Again, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by the New York Blood Center Incorporated, which is proposing a series of land use actions in order to facilitate the redevelopment of their existing building located at 310 East 67th Street in order to build a new modern life science hub with commercial laboratory space and community facilities for the Blood Center and its commercial institutional partners. The proposed building will have a 10 FAR and a total of approximately 452,000 square feet divided between the New York Blood Center community facility use, which is approximately 139,000 square feet, and the commercial lab space, which is approximately 313,000 square feet. The building will be 334 feet in height with 16 stories. The lower floors will contain the Blood Center's headquarters, their laboratories, office, administrative spaces, research, and development facilities, and be their principal blood donation location. The application was certified on April 19th, and it's now back for pre-hearing review. Next slide, please. So the development site is located mid-block between First and Second Avenue and has frontages along E66 and 67th Street in Manhattan, Community District Eight. Existing zoning, of course, is the R8B on the mid-blocks, while the Second Avenue is a C19. The area map shows the development site in a dotted red line and the project area in a dotted black line and the proposed zoning. The existing building was completed in 1930 and housed the New York Trade School, and currently, the Blood Center has approximately 131,000 square feet of community facility use. The site itself is unusual in that it is, has a very large lot size. It has, is 225 feet by 200 feet for a total of 45,000 square feet. Next slide, please. So this map will give you context of the neighborhood and the institutions in the immediate area. The Blood Center is outlined in red in the middle of the slide. So the blue-shaded areas represent the location of the many world-renowned health, medical, and research institutions, including those that have collaborated with the Blood Center, such as Rockefeller University, New York Presbyterian, Weill Cornell, and MSK. The New York Blood Center was founded in 1959, and they have been at this location in Manhattan for decades, since the early 60s. The Blood Center itself is a not-for-profit institution with the dual public health mission of supplying transfusion products to the metro region and undertaking scientific research. They are a leading supplier of blood and blood-related products to over 500 hospitals and organizations in the metro area. With the ongoing pandemic, the Blood Center is currently working on COVID-19, but they also have a long history of working on treatments for sickle cell anemia, working with stem cells and other cellular therapies, and exploring cures for Parkinson's, blindness, Alzheimer's, as well as SARS, MERS, and HIV vaccines. Two other storied and beloved institutions in the area is the, are the Julia Richmond Education Complex and St. Catherine's Park. They're just to the north, as you can see on the map, those sites. Julia Richmond has six separate schools, including a performing arts school and a school for autistic children, and I think a total of about 1,800 students. Next slide, please. So the requested actions. The first one is the zoning map amendment to rezone the mid-block Blood Center site from an R8B district to a C27 district, and to rezone the Second Avenue frontages from a C19 district to a C28 district on both sides of the avenue between E66 and 67th to a depth of 100 feet. Second is a zoning map, sorry, a zoning tax amendment to allow by special permit a scientific research and development facility in a C27 district, and to allow modifications of the floor area, height, and setback yard and sign regulations. and to allow modifications of the floor area, height and setback yard and sign regulations, as well as to designate in appendix F of the zoning resolution, the development site as an M I H mandatory inclusionary housing site. Finally, the special permit, section seventy four forty eight special permit as amended through this project is to permit a scientific research and development facility in a C two seven district within Community District Eight of Manhattan. Next slide, please. So the proposal is to change the existing R eight B district to a C two seven district on the development site in blue on these maps and to change the existing C one nine district to a C two eight along the avenue. Now, the R eight B is a residential district, contextual district that allows residential uses up to a four F A R and community facility uses up to five point one F A R. It requires a building base of between fifty five and sixty five feet and imposes a maximum total building height of seventy five feet. The proposed C two seven district has equivalent bulk regulations of an R nine district and the C two seven district permits commercial F A Rs at two point O and community facility uses at ten F A R. For the proposed C two eight district along the Second Avenue frontage, the C two eight differs from the existing C one nine in the range of commercial uses permitted. There, it's slightly broader than the C one nine. Both districts permit use groups one through six, but in C two eight districts, use group seven is permitted as well as use group eight, which is theaters and medical and dental labs for research and testing. Next slide, please. So the findings for the scientific research facility are listed here on the slide. The city's efforts to support the life science industry date back all the way to nineteen ninety when the special permit was originally adopted by the commission. This was to facilitate the Columbia University Audubon Research Park in, in Washington Heights. This action enabled the city planning commission to allow via the special permit use group seventeen laboratories, which are only permitted in manufacturing districts into commercial C six zoning districts. The CPC report for that original text amendment noted that the special permit would help to promote the biomedical industry in the city and explained that one of the main reasons for the text amendment was to enable life science and biotech research and development laboratories to be located near existing medical institutions because of the similarity between the lab uses and the uses already in the medical institutions, hospitals, as well as to encourage collaboration between these world-class institutions. Next slide, please. So I'll walk you through the waivers here. The first waiver is for heightened setback, which is represented by the green diagonal line on the illustration. So above the four-story base, the building will include twelve stories to be used by the commercial labs and office space with floor plates of approximately thirty thousand square feet. This upper portion of the building will encroach on the required twenty-foot setback from both Sixty Seventh and Sixty Sixth Streets. It will have a setback of fifteen feet from Sixty Seventh Street and four feet from Sixty Sixth Street. It will also encroach on the sky exposure plane from Sixty Seventh Street, starting at a height of approximately one hundred twenty five feet and from Sixty Six, starting at approximately ninety six feet. The second waiver is to have modifications to the rear yard regulations represented by the green check pattern on the illustration. So because this is a through lot with frontages on both streets, a rear yard equivalent of twenty feet is required to be provided along each of the side lot lines of the zoning lot, twenty feet on each front lot line or forty feet in the middle of the lot. The base portion of the building will encroach on the required twenty-foot rear yard equivalent wherever it is located as the building's lower floors will be built to the lot line. The upper portion of the building will be built within fifteen feet of the eastern lot line, so it will encroach on the required twenty-foot rear yard equivalent along the eastern edge of the building of, of the zoning lot by five feet. The third waiver shown here is the use waiver, which is a, a light tan, tannish type of color. The permitted commercial F A R in a C two seven district is two. The amount of commercial special permit use for area in the proposed development would be six point nine two F A R or three hundred and twelve thousand square feet. They promote, the proposed commercial labs and related office space would be nearly identical in character activities and impacts to the community facility laboratories that could be conducted at, that could be conducted on this location as a, as a right basis and which are routinely provided for in hospitals and universities. Next slide, please. The applicant is also proposing modifications to the sign regulations. They were proposing a total of one thousand square feet of signage, including five hundred and thirty on the Sixty Seventh Street frontage, which is, which is at the top of the slide and four hundred and seventy square feet on the Sixty Sixth frontage because there'll be lobbies and entrances on both sides. On each street frontage, there'll be a three hundred square foot illuminated sign at a height of forty feet. Total illuminated signage will be seven hundred and thirty square feet and total non-illuminated signage will be two hundred and seventy square feet. Next slide, please. So we have an illustration of the program distribution and it shows you the ground floor programming. You can see on the left, the research laboratories, commercial labs stacked in the upper floors in the large mechanical space. There's a lot of ventilation requirements to work for these life science buildings. On the right, you can see the, the ground floor. There's the two lobby entrances, the loading and the unloading, a lobby with a cafe and a multi-purpose room. Next slide, please. So the draft environmental impact statement was issued on April sixteenth. It identified significant adverse impacts with respect to shadows and construction noise. No other significant adverse impacts were identified. Next slide, please. So on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, Community Board Eight voted to disapprove the application by a vote of thirty eight to zero to one. They had a number of issues, as you can read in their detailed, extremely detailed letter. They're want to protect the R eight B mid-block zoning district. This is the zoning contextual zoning district that residents of the Upper East Side really love. There had issues with the impacts on St. Catherine's Park and J Rec. This is mainly pertinent related to the shadows, the shadow impacts, but also the noise. And of course, they had issues with the height and bulk, the building saying it was excessive. We have not yet received the Borough President's letter, but as soon as we receive it, we'll get it out to you with a cover memo detailing the, the, the letter. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Question from the commission? Okay, we will see this at a public hearing on Thursday.
The thirteenth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Three. Our presenter is Joshua Ogul.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is an application by V R P East Brooklyn Development LLC for a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of a fourteen-story mixed-use building. The application was certified on April fifth and a public hearing will be this Wednesday, July twenty eighth. Next slide, please. The project is located at two seventy Nostrand Avenue between Costco and Decalba Avenues in the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District Three. Next slide, please. The proposed development would consist of a fourteen-story mixed commercial, community facility and residential development with a total floor area of approximately three hundred forty two thousand nine hundred square feet or seven point two F A R. The four hundred eighty seven unit development would include approximately one hundred forty four units that would be permanently affordable pursuant to the workforce option of the mandatory inclusionary housing program. The approximately eleven thousand square feet of commercial floor area would be located on the ground floor along Nostrand and Decalb Avenues. The eleven hundred twenty eight square foot community facility would be located on the Decalb Avenue side of the proposed development. Next slide, please. To facilitate the proposed actions, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an R seven A to an R eight A district with a C two four overlay along Decalb and Nostrand. R seven A districts M I H allow a maximum F A R of four point six and a maximum height of ninety five feet or nine stories. C two four districts are commercial overlays that permit a maximum F A R of two in R seven districts. R eight A districts with M I H allow a maximum residential F A R of seven point two and a maximum height of one hundred forty five feet or fourteen stories. When mapped with an R eight A district, C two four districts permit a maximum F A R of two for commercial uses. Next slide, please. In addition, a zoning text amendment is being proposed to establish an M I H area co-terminus with a proposed rezoning area mapped with option two and the workforce option. Next slide, please. On June seventh, Community Board Three held a remote public hearing on the application and with a vote of five in favor and four against and zero abstaining, voted to disapprove of the application. An attached memo included in the CPC's briefing package, they shared concerns over the proposed density being out of scale with the surrounding area and with the affordability, affordability levels and lack of family-sized units. Next slide, please. On June fourteenth, Brooklyn Borough President Eric Adams held a remote public hearing on the application. On July twentieth, the Borough President issued a recommendation to disapprove. While the Borough President did not provide conditions, he did detail concerns that led to the disapproval, primarily the proposed density being out of scale and that the workforce option is unable to meet the affordability levels needed in the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood. The Borough President did state that he supports increased density close to transit in line with two seventy Nostrand, but did not explicitly detail what level of density would be appropriate. In response to the concerns raised by the Borough President and Community Board Three, the applicant is committed to reducing the A M I levels from a hundred fifteen percent to one hundred percent and to increase the number of two-bedroom units from eighty to ninety seven. This was detailed in a memo shared with the commission last Friday. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
And just to remind the commission that at the time of certification, we explained that the department throughout had counseled the applicant that we thought that the proposed density was way too high. We thought that this was an appropriate site for a rezoning for additional housing and permanently affordable housing, but were concerned with the R A proposal. Commissioner Duak?
Uh, thank you. The R seven in place right now, that's not an M I H mapped R seven, is it?
No.
So that, that's a, that's a four F A R, not, not a four six. The, has the applicant given thought to an R seven D proposal, which would give him, I believe, five point six F A R and reduce the height?
We had expressed concerns to the applicant over their proposed R eight A density and we can come back over at post-hearing to share appropriate density that the, what density the department feels is appropriate.
I'm, I'm sorry, you said you had expressed the concerns already to them and?
Yeah, and they proceeded with the R eight A.
We did this before the time of certification, which is what led to my statement at the time of certification. But what we are able to do is to come back to the commission post-hearing, having modeled other R seven densities that would be sufficiently high enough to trigger M I H, but that would reduce both the height and the density.
Would, would an R seven D be to, would, would that?
We can look at R seven D and R seven X. We'll, we'll come back with, with options obviously constrained by what is within scope.
And I, I agree with the, with the department, the R eight A is, it seems to be out of scope for that area. Looking, you just, you just look at the zoning map, it's, it's totally out of context. Thanks.
Commissioner Reedy?
Thank you. Subsequent to the community board votes and so forth and Borough President, has the developer expressed any willingness to look at different designations or is sticking with the R eight?
Again, we'd expressed concerns about it, but they, despite that, pre-cert, they proceed with the R eight A, but they can speak more towards the alternate, any other scenarios as at the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The fourteenth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Twelve. Our presenter is Colin Lee.
Good afternoon. This application is by Yitchak Stern. It's for a mixed-use building at seventeen seventy six Forty Eighth Street. And this application was certified on April fourth, twenty twenty one and is returning for pre-hearing. Next slide. And this project is located in the Borough of Brooklyn in the neighborhood of Borough Park in Community District Twelve. Next slide. The actions would facilitate a new three-story mixed-use building with five dwelling units at approximately seven thousand square feet of total floor area, four thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet of residential floor area and two thousand and sixty five square feet of commercial floor area at a total F A R of one point nine three. No accessory off-street parking spaces will be provided since the proposed development waves out of this requirement. Next slide. In order to facilitate the development, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from an R five to an R six B and R six B C two four district and a zoning text amendment to, appendix F to map the project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The applicants are mapping M I H of the project area, which could potentially result in income restricted dwelling units in the future. But this proposal cannot generate any income restricted units on the development site due to the small size of the zoning lot. Next slide. In Brooklyn Community Board Twelve held a public meeting and vote in June and approved the application with thirty four in favor. Next slide. And the Brooklyn Borough President held a public meeting in June and approved the application with conditions. The Borough President stated that the proposed development supports the need of additional housing units without altering the immediate area's low-rise context. The Borough President is supportive of the thirty-five-foot depth of the commercial overlay to not encroach upon the predominantly residential mid-block. None of the B P's conditions were land use related and the conditions listed here were addressed to city council to consider the applicant's written commitments. We also reached out to the applicant representatives and they are aware of these conditions and will be ready to answer any questions at the public hearing if there are any. And there are additional drawings showing the floor plans, which are included in the briefing package. And this concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Ortiz?
Hi, I understand the design is outside of our purview, but I find it sort of perplexing why you would not choose to use the corner for the commercial and instead move it mid-block. I mean, the corners are very valuable for commercial space, so would be interested in why that design decision was made. We also want to activate the corner, so would like some insight on that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can pass that message on to the applicant's representatives and they can speak to that on, on Wednesday.
Other questions? Okay, we will see this at our public hearing on Wednesday.
All right. The fifteenth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment and special permit in Brooklyn Community District Nine. Our presenter is Jonah Rogoff.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners. This is an application returning for pre-hearing by Franklin Avenue Acquisition LLC for a zoning map amendment to special permits and a zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of two thirty-nine-story towers totaling one point sixteen million square feet with fifteen hundred and seventy-eight units and ground floor commercial and community facility space. Next slide, please. As a quick refresher, the project is located in the Crown Heights neighborhood of Brooklyn on a two point seven six acre site that has five hundred and seventy-six feet of frontage along Franklin Avenue and two hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage along Montgomery Street, both of which are seventy feet in width and classified as narrow under zoning. The Broken Botanic Garden is located to the west and Jackie Robinson Playground is across to the, across the street to the east. Much of the surrounding area contains mid-rise three-to-eight-story apartment buildings, while a few residential towers are located nearby, including the three hundred and thirty-five-foot-tall Foley Towers to the north and the two hundred and fifty-eight-foot-tall Epitz Field Housing Complex to the east, both of which are setback from the street. Next slide, please. The actions would facilitate two- The actions would facilitate two thirty-nine-story, four hundred and twenty-one-foot-tall mixed-use buildings totaling approximately one point sixteen million square feet of floor area or a total of nine point seven FAR. This would include fifteen hundred and seventy-eight residential units, of which thirty percent or four hundred and seventy-four units would be subject to MIH. And then an additional twenty percent or three hundred and fifteen units, the applicant intends to set aside as middle-income housing. The proposed development would also contain approximately twenty thousand square feet of commercial, nine thousand square feet of community facility uses intended to be occupied as a daycare childcare center, as well as an indoor garage with one hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces and a public access area located in the center of the site. Next slide, please. To facilitate the development, the applicant is seeking for land use actions, a zoning map amendment from R six A to R nine D and R nine D with a C two four overlay, a special permit related to a large-scale general development to modify base height, tower top, and tower lot coverage requirements, a special permit to reduce the number of required off-street parking spaces from four hundred and forty-two to one hundred and twenty-eight, and then a zoning text amendment to map mandatory inclusionary housing area under options one and two. Next slide, please. Before summarizing the Community Board's recommendation, I'd just like to note that due a court-mandated temporary restraining order, the Uler clock was suspended for two periods of time, first from March second to May twelfth and then from June fourth to June tenth. On June twenty-third, Community Board Nine voted to disapprove the application with no conditions by a vote of twenty-two in favor to oppose and nine abstaining, while providing three explanatory declarations in their recommendation. First, that the existing zoning mapped in nineteen ninety-one considered high protections for the Brooklyn Botanic Garden should be sustained. Second, any proposed modifications after certification should not be considered as part of this Uler preview as the board has not been provided sufficient documentation to substantiate or refute any claims made in revised presentations. And third, that the magnitude of the proposed project is grossly inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood and that the applicant has not acted in good faith to address community concerns. We're still awaiting the Borough President's recommendation, uh but as soon as we receive that, we'll be sure to uh share with the Commission. Next slide, please. A draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, for the project has been completed and a notice was issued issued on January twenty-ninth of this year. The DEIS identified significant adverse impacts with respect to community facilities and services, transportation, construction, and then with respect to open space shadows and natural resources, uh several impacts were identified related to the Brooklyn Botanic Garden and Jackie Robinson Playground. No other significant adverse impacts were identified. Mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and will be explored further in the FEIS. Next slide, please. So prior to the public hearing this Thursday, the department would like to highlight a few specific concerns, which were first addressed, expressed by the the Chair at certification. First, we want to reiterate that the department supports opportunities for housing growth and affordable housing, whether we're speaking about across Brooklyn, within Crown Heights, or even the area around the site. But we feel strongly that these goals must be balanced by the appropriate building form and scale for the location. To that end, we believe that the project's bulk, particularly the tower width, the height, and the overall massing creates an overbearing envelope that's grossly out of scale for the neighborhood. Moreover, the proposed R nine D zoning is a district intended to be mapped in high-density areas along wide streets and a direct and directly adjacent to elevated transit lines. This site does not present these conditions. It's located on a narrow street that's over a quarter mile from a subway station. We also know that the proposed FAR of nine point seven is comparable to high-density areas like downtown Brooklyn or Lower Manhattan or in specific locations with major wide streets, and as such, this density is inappropriate for this location. In addition, we want to stress too that throughout the pre-certification process, the department repeatedly informed the the developer, the applicant of these concerns, and their team was consistently unwilling to adjust their proposal to a more appropriate scheme. Next slide, please. And then with respect to the environmental review, we want to note that the draft EIS contains a shadow analysis showing that the height and bulk of the towers would result in a significant adverse and unmitigated shadows impact on the Brooklyn Botanic Gardens, greenhouses, conservatories, along with Jackie Robinson Playground. These are both important open-space resources, with the garden in particular having unique and sensitive plants that require extensive sunlight for propagation throughout the year and during the morning hours, as illustrated in the diagrams shown on the slide. For these reasons, the department would like to reaffirm its opposition to the application. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
I'd like to make two additional comments. One is that uh we frequently see shadow impacts, but that the receptor that we're talking about here is a uniquely sensitive receptor. The second point that I would make is on the item that we were just discussing at two seventy Nostrand. We were discussing the difference between an R eight or an R seven D where um it is a zoning district, a district that we understand um the parameters. Here, this is a request for a change in zoning and a large scale. A large scale is a tool that we use to very much for large projects to very much shape the project itself. So this is not a situation where one could, in post-hearing review, say, oh, we will downzone it and somehow figure out how to re-change the large scale. Um, it's just not amenable to it in this instance, we believe, as a department. And with that, I'll turn it over for questions. Commissioner Ortiz.
I mean, just to reiterate, I think the issues, you know, we need to discuss um for for me, in particular, the shadow impacts on the garden, the conservatories, Jackie Robinson Park in particular. Um, and I do think we need to unpack, you know, the the challenge of scale and affordability. Like, we can't get both, you know, and I think that's some of the argument that's being put forth here. But, you know, in this case, I don't think that um, you know, it should come at the expense of really a national treasure, which is the Brooklyn Botanical Garden, who has said that this is an existential threat um to them. And I think they're if, you know, they should be believed and that should be taken at face value, so.
Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. If the applicant uh on Thursday can speak to the um current as-of-right situation and what what is possible under that scenario, it would be interesting to note the differences.
Sure, we'll be sure to to convey that to them.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then I'll note that this public hearing will actually be on Thursday.
Thank you.
The sixteenth item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map, zoning tax amendments, UDAP designation disposition of city-owned property and city map amendments in Brooklyn Community Districts Two and Six. Our presenter is Jonathan Keller.
Uh, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a pre-hearing update for the Gowanus Neighborhood Plan and the associated proposed land use actions. Uh, next slide. Uh, first, I'll provide a quick overview of the plan and actions to reroute us in the subject matter. As you recall, uh, from our presentation from April nineteenth, it is quite long. Uh, so I wanted to highlight some key aspects of the zoning proposal in preparation for the public hearing. Uh, specifically, I wanted to review the carefully crafted approach to mixed use in Gowanus, uh, touch on the zoning approach around Thomas Green Playground, uh, the Canal Corridor, Gowanus Green, and Waterfront Access Plan. And then I will provide an overview of the Community Board's review uh and recommendation. Um, and whenever we get the Borough President's recommendation, we will, of course, uh, follow up and send along to you. Next slide. The product of years of virtuous and iterative feedback loops, the proposed actions under public review are a suite of land use actions that would effectuate a collaborative and comprehensive plan for the neighborhood defined by the once-and-future-clean, vibrant, and thriving Gowanus Canal. Next slide. These land use actions would facilitate and underpin the overall Gowanus plan that responds to the needs of today and the future with significant new affordable homes, new jobs, and new open spaces, including a new waterfront park, new schools, and incentives to keep Gowanus mixed use, improvements to infrastructure in Nitech communities, a resilient shoreline, a greener canopy, and catalyzing brownfield cleanups. Next slide. The zoning proposal uh overall is an opportunity to transform the neighborhood and fulfill the community's vision for a mixed-use, sustainable, and thriving neighborhood. Next slide. I want to touch on um what I mentioned before about our approach to mixed use in the neighborhood. It's a cornerstone of the proposal um for its ability to promote a mixing of uses throughout the neighborhood and in mixed-use developments. We heard clearly the fear that if we allow residential everywhere, then everything would turn residential with ground-floor lobbies and amenities. Now, residential use and affordable housing are key pieces of what the community wants to see. They do not want to lose part of the commercial and light-industrial legacy. We had many conversations about how to do just that and do it in a way that people had confidence would work and that would result in a feasible mixed-use development. What we came up with is a multifaceted approach that uses the neighborhood scale, block scale, and building scale to encourage or require a mix of uses, commercial and light-industrial alongside and nearby residential use. Next slide. At the neighborhood scale, we've maintained certain side streets as M districts given certain conditions, including where there is a concentration of active commercial and light-industrial businesses. Next slide. And at the block scale, we've paired M districts with residential districts and paid attention to the parity between the residential floor area ratio and the non-residential floor area ratio. And this includes, uh, we've tailored the bulk envelope to allow for either a residential building, a non-residential building, or a mixed-use building at various amounts of mixing. Next slide. We also paid close attention to key corridors and areas that we wanted to activate with ground-floor non-residential requirements. Outside of Fourth Avenue, where the first ground-floor requirements were created in the city, these include Union Street and around Thomas Green Playground. Next slide. Uh, lastly, around new planned or renovated open space and where the proposed density and bulk envelopes are sufficient to accommodate it, we are proposing non-residential use incentives that allows developers to increase their total maximum floor area ratio with non-residential uses only. One would incentivize the inclusion of a wide range of non-residential uses allowed in the proposed districts. The second would incentivize a more specific set of uses that include light industrial, arts-related, cultural, and civic uses and repair and production services. Next slide. This gets to the goal of activating the envisioned canal waterfront open spaces and around Thomas Green Playground with one to two stories of non-residential space. Next slide. And specifically around Thomas Green Playground, um highlighting here that uh that special area since we'll talk about the canal in a second, and the canal is rightly, for many reasons, the focus uh for many people. The proposed zoning changes around uh Thomas Green Playground are interconnected and necessary to support a new urban fabric around a remediated and renovated park. Uh, we do not want to see residential-only buildings fronting on this park that is used by Nitech residents. The equity lens here drives us to try to avoid a sense of privatization of this space. It's a public park and we need to protect that field. Next slide. The canal is undoubtedly the emerald necklace of the plan. Next slide. And we work tirelessly and passionately to ensure we leverage the canal sense of place and promote the creation of an exciting urban environment. As you have seen, read, and will hear, the goals for the canal are many. Next slide. Uh, and we work to balance these many goals while also making sure development and everything we want to see is feasible, including a mix of uses and resilient and sustainable buildings, actively programmed open spaces with active uses fronting on them in a resilient waterfront that is flexible enough to support bi-level esplanades and grading challenges between sites and bridges. Next slide. We also crafted building envelopes along the canal that are flexible to promote excellent building design while being prescriptive about base heights and tower locations in order to be sensitive to adjacent contacts. These regulations are sensitive to transitions toward upland blocks and their low-rise brownstone contacts, while also being sensitive to toward the canal and future waterfront esplanade, while also providing enough flexibility to promote variation in building form and world-class architecture. Next slide. And that's no small task, uh, thanks to Siggy and Amritha and the rest of our team who tackled this with the care and expertise and vision they show on all projects. Uh, here are two illustrative uh illustrative uh sketches you have seen before. Next slide. And a view uh looking north from Third Street. Next slide. And if the canal is the emerald necklace of the plan, then Gowanus Green surely is the crown jewel. Next slide. The city on site is an opportunity to deliver on decades of community organizing. Uh, master planned with the private site to the south in mind, Gowanus Green would revitalize a brownfield site just a short, equidistant walk between two subway stations by mapping new parkland and new streets that institutionalize sound urban design principles. Next slide. The project would include approximately nine hundred and fifty units of affordable housing, space for a new school, and a new one-and-a-half-acre waterfront park. Next slide. Gowanus Green, together with the urban design framework noted above, will set the stage for a transformative new phase for the Gowanus Canal and its surroundings, one that is sustainable, lively, and equitable. Next slide. And next slide, we start talking about the Waterfront Access Plan. Gowanus Canal is a unique water body that requires unique zoning regulations to guide its development and construction of a shore public walkway. Next slide. The WAP will institutionalize a framework for a continuous shore public walkway that will be constructed over time through a mix of public and private investment. Next slide. Together with the provisions to promote mixed-use buildings through innovative use incentives and select ground-floor use requirements, the WAP would create a vibrant, active, and resilient waterfront. Next slide. Modifications in the WAP would help ensure the future shoreline is appropriately elevated while allowing for a shore public walkway with sufficient design flexibility to accommodate a variety of uses, activities, and experiences. Next slide. Coupled with the proposed zoning changes, the modifications in the special district and planned open space investments, the WAP would also provide significant amounts of new open space and a new urban tree canopy in a former industrial area that is mostly hardscaped. Next slide. These provisions would generate new waterfront neighborhood parks and open spaces and reconnect the community to the Gowanus Canal. Next slide. Of course, as noted in April, the proposed actions have been analyzed in a draft environmental impact statement that looked at a number of analysis areas related to the environment. Next slide. Of these, the draft EIS found potential for significant adverse impacts in the following categories. And as always, mitigation is our for mitigation measures are further studied between draft and final EIS. And on Wednesday, the public hearing will double as a hearing on the environmental impact statement. Next slide. Uh, per a court order on June third, Community Boards Two and Six held a joint public hearing. Community Board Two and Six worked closely with each other and DCP in making their hybrid hearing happen. These volunteers gave their gave weeks of their time during an incredibly busy season to allow the public to provide input and testimony in a safe and comfortable way. Next slide. DCP supported the community boards in pulling off an unprecedented hybrid uh meeting that was held via Zoom with a supplemental location for in-person testimony at Washington Park at Fourth Avenue and Third Street. The hearing lasted around six hours and went extremely smoothly, which belied the amount of work going on behind the scenes. About a half of DCP was involved in some way in putting uh this event on from prep work and securing licenses to looking at site locations, getting equipment, et cetera, troubleshooting the hybrid interactions, setting up and tearing down. And roughly a third of the agency was involved in the technical, remote, and in-person staffing on the actual day. This is truly a physical and tangible testament of the decades-long passion and dedication this agency and the Brooklyn office has to Gowanus and the Gowanus plan. Next slide. On June sixteenth, Community Board Two voted to disapprove the application with no conditions. On June sixteenth, Community Board two voted to disapprove the application with no conditions. On June twenty-third, Community Board six voted to approve with conditions. And as noted at the outset, Borough President Adams' recommendation is still pending. Next slide. Community Board six provided a extensive fourteen-page letter on the project that detailed its hopes, opinions and conditions with respect to the Gowanus Neighborhood Plan by topic area. The letter included the following introduction. Quote, "After years of consideration through workshops, working groups, public meetings and formal resolutions. And after careful review of both the proposal and public testimony, Brooklyn Community Board six hereby recommends that the proposed Gowanus Neighborhood rezoning be approved with conditions." The letter acknowledges the importance of Nycha investments to the board's conditional support for the application. Next slide. The recommendations by CB six are organized by topic area ranging from environmental remediation, zoning, housing, accountability and more. First up, resiliency and sustainability. The board highlighted, and if you recall from our April presentation and also our Gowanus Framework, these topic areas are from our framework to provide a structure for us to converse and organize the boards and ultimately the Borough President's recommendations. So first up, the resiliency and sustainability. The board highlighted concerns around brownfield remediation, sewer capacity and compliance with federal orders governing the superfund remedy. The board also recommended strategies to make Gowanus more resilient in the face of climate change, including analyzing coastal and inland flooding in the Gowanus portion of the industrial business zone and Red Hook. The resolution also recommends that the city support and fund development and implementation of a Gowanus Community Preparedness Plan. And strategies for minimizing urban heat island effects in the neighborhood. Next slide. The resolution also notes that support for the application inherently means support for the thousands of new neighbors anticipated to result from the changes in land use. The board recommends that the substantial increase in population be met with appropriate increases in municipal services. Including provision of publicly funded early childcare programs and setting aside at least one additional site for a new school. The resolution supports and acknowledges the application's focus on generating new open space in the neighborhood. While the board is enthusiastic about the new open space. The resolution recommends the city commit to fund and set timelines for new open spaces, open spaces on Gowanus Green, the head of Canal CSO Facility Open Space. Identify and fund additional open space opportunities, whether new or improvements to existing spaces, mitigate, identify shadow impacts on Thomas Green Playgrounds, Douglas and DeGrasse Pool. Consider ways to increase open space through select street closures and support the creation of a Parks Improvement District. The Community Board six supports the reinvigoration and celebration of the Gowanus Canal and is delighted that the application includes a waterfront access plan. That will guide nearly four acres of new waterfront open space. The resolution does recommend specific locations for boat or kayak access, including at city-owned sites. And then evenly distributed on both sides of the canal. The board recommends facilitating new canal crossings at the First Street Basin, the Grosse Street and between the Gowanus Green Site. And the city-owned salt lot where the second of two ordered CSO facilities will be constructed. Next slide. The resolution notes the years of board advocacy for affordable housing within its district and the current dearth of affordable housing options. The resolution notes the years of erosion of homes affordable to lower and middle-income New Yorkers and laments that the subsequent loss of socioeconomic, racial and ethnic diversity within Community District six. The board supports the application to generate significant amounts of new housing, including affordable housing. And also recommends the racial impact study be conducted and changes to the city's housing policies to further integrate their neighborhoods. As noted in their introduction, the board's lengthy resolution is predicated on one condition above all. Funding improvements to the three Nycha communities of Gowanus Houses, Wyckoff Gardens and Warren Houses. The resolution also includes recommendations for Nycha resident involvement in capital repairs processes and for local hiring. Next slide. Community Board six thanked DCP for keeping its twenty eighteen commitment to produce a vision plan for the Gowanus IBZ. The vision plan released in May twenty twenty-one supports business growth, creates a land use framework and identifies priority, infrastructure and workforce development needs. The board recommended that the department take the next step and translate the land use framework into a zoning framework. Additionally, the board outlined recommendations for infrastructure investment in the Gowanus IBZ related to transportation and mobility. Broadband internet, stormwater drainage, relocation assistance for businesses that seek to relocate. And workforce development opportunities to complement the anticipated thousands of new jobs and affordable homes. Next slide. On transit, the resolution recommends increasing subway and bus capacity in the neighborhood to meet anticipated peak demand projections and making neighborhood subway stations accessible for people with mobility impairments. The board also recommends consideration of new bridge locations and expanding loading zones for pickups and drop-offs throughout the area. Next slide. Community Board six supports the goals of the application to reinforce and encourage the mixed use character of Gowanus. However, the board recommends making select changes to the zoning proposal to further curate and mandate the proposed non-residential use incentives, expand ground floor use requirements to street frontages, adjacent Nycha communities. And weight select groups of professions and industries above others to encourage their retention or expansion in the neighborhood. Next slide. And lastly, on accountability and implementation of the plan, the board requested a commitment to support and fund a Gowanus rezoning task force for fifteen years. The task force would include city agencies, local organizations and other stakeholders and would address Community Board six's concerns over timely updates, coordination and information dissemination. Regarding private and public projects and mitigation of identified adverse impacts. Thank you and I'm happy to take your questions.
I'd like to just emphasize two facets of Jonathan's excellent and comprehensive presentation. One is the partnership that we've had with CB six and CB two. We see in the CB six recommendation, the extent to which they have been working hand in glove with us in developing this rezoning proposal. The second is just to emphasize how grateful I am to the department. Fifty percent of the department worked on this proposal on being able to get that outdoor, indoor, remote, Community Board public hearing done. And a third of the folks were involved in actually the holding of the hearing. That really went above and beyond those Brooklyn office. A testament to Jonathan and the Brooklyn office team for pulling them together, but a shout out to the entire department. And with that, I'll take questions. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, I'm probably going to sound a bit like a broken record, but you know, the issues I'd like to make sure that we cover at the hearing are really the connection between the kind of demand we project for retail and office under the, you know, build-out scenario. And the retail requirements and ground floor, you know, commercial space requirements that are included in this zoning. Because I continue to have concerns that we are setting up a situation where we are over retailing this community and creating future issues with vacancies. None of us want that. And so I'd really like to see what kind of data backs up these projections that are pretty massive, you know, five hundred and ninety-four thousand square feet of local retail. With current and new in full build-out. When, you know, nothing that, none of the numbers I run get us anywhere close to being able to support that amount of retail on the ground floor. So I'd really like to know where the department is coming from with the framework that creates that much retail.
Other questions or comments? Okay, then this will be added to our very heavy public hearing schedule on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
The seventeenth item on our agenda is a is a general, this one should be quick though, a general project plan approval in Brooklyn Community District five. Alexandra Patty Diaz is here to discuss the draft of the letter was in your package. And this was previously discussed and presented. So this is a shortened presentation. Go ahead, Alexandra.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Next. Within the draft letter that the Brooklyn office drafted. We included the following recommendations for the Empire State Development to consider while they're crafting the project of the Brooklyn Development Center. To reconsider the connection between the Fontains and the project. We added recommendations to enhance the pedestrian experience and and also the security along Fontaine Avenue to include sidewalk amenities along all sidewalks of the project. I'm seeing Commissioner Ortiz's recommendation for both sidewalks that are fronting ground floors where there is non-residential and residential activities to enhance the building, the site guidelines. By mandating setbacks and other architectural breaks as they're designed right now and to work with the MTA to evaluate the extension of the three-line towards Spring Creek, which also was an addition from Commissioner Duick from the last review session. We're open to add any other comments or receive your guidance and recommendations for this draft letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra. Commissioner Ortiz.
Just for clarification, you know, the setbacks to allow for landscaping were focused on residential where we do have ground floor residential. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will send the comprehensive letter to Empire State Development. We don't need to vote on that. We just wanted to do the presentation to make it clear that we were incorporating your comment, Commissioner Duick, and also Commissioner Ortiz's into the letter.
For future votes on Wednesday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, staff have prepared reports on eight forty Atlantic Avenue rezoning, one thirty-three Beach, one sixteenth Street rezoning. The ACS twenty-one hundred Barto, it's an office space lease. And the restore the George City map amendment. Also scheduled for a decision on Wednesday, our three twenty-six College Road subdivision, a special natural area district approval in the Bronx. Fifty-one The Oval in Staten Island and seventy-three Brook Street, also in Staten Island. On August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, staff are currently preparing reports for the I'll get this, Akawahang Manaha Hanung, which is a landmark designation in Staten Island. The Kim Lau War Memorial and the New York Public Library Harlem Branch, also both are landmark designations. For post-hearing follow-up, the Lefrac City Senior Center, I believe there was a letter in your package if there are any further questions on that. Okay. One oh six oh two Rockaway Beach Boulevard. Further questions? Okay. Three oh seven Kent. Okay, no, there are any further questions on three oh seven Kent? All right. Twenty-eight forty Nap Street. One oh one Varick Avenue. Six thirty-three, six forty-one West one forty-second Street. I believe Ryan Cody from Manhattan Office is here to discuss.
All right, so I'm here for the post-hearing review for six thirty-three, six forty-one West one forty-second Street. Next slide, please. As a quick reminder, this is a private application for a zoning map amendment of five tax lots in West Harlem, Community District nine, from a R six A district to a R nine A zoning district and a tax amendment to MAP and MIH area. These actions would facilitate a seventeen-story, one hundred and seventy-foot residential development with eighty-one residential units, twenty of which would be made permanently affordable, according to MIH option one. Next slide, please. So I first want to respond to the requests made at a pre-hearing review to understand the proposed height within the surrounding context. As you can see here, there are residential and mixed-use buildings with a range of heights with taller buildings alongside Riverside Drive and the commercial corridor of Broadway. This includes the buildings just north and south of the development site itself that range from one hundred and thirty-four feet to one hundred and forty-five feet. The one hundred and seventy-foot building proposed would be the tallest in the immediate surroundings with an outlier of a two hundred and sixteen tower between, two hundred and sixteen-foot tower, excuse me, between one hundred and thirty-ninth Street and one hundred and forty-second Street. Next slide, please. And at the hearing, we heard the applicant's alternative for an RAA district. So we are comparing that with the current R nine A proposal here and showing a lower density option as well at R seven A. The R A A district would decrease the height from one hundred and seventy to one hundred and forty feet. And also decrease units from eighty-one to sixty-six units, decreasing MIH or mandatory inclusion housing units by three. The R seven A district would bring the height down even further to ninety feet and decrease MIH units by nine for a total of eleven affordable housing units. As we previously stated, the department encouraged the applicant to lower density options throughout the application process. And we believe the R A density is appropriate, given the surrounding context, while still facilitating much-needed housing by including seventeen affordable units in Community District nine. We believe that the R seven A results in a building that is substantially lower than the Riverside Drive context and also results in a loss of opportunity for affordable housing. Next slide, please. We do recognize that this portion of the block was rezoned in two thousand and twelve to the R six A district to reflect the scale of the townhomes along one hundred and forty-second Street. This map shows the current R six A district and the proposed R nine A project area. The department recognizing both the need for affordable housing across the city and the urban context along Riverside Drive continues to support increased density along the western portion of this block at the scale of an R A A district. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. We will then be preparing a report with the commission making the modification from R nine A to R eight A, which is within scope.
The next for post-hearing follow-up, the Windermere. I think they covered their bases on that one. River North Liberty Towers. Okay, shaking your head. All right.
We addressed it comprehensively.
Two fifty-two Victory Boulevard. And the Elevate Transit Zoning for Accessibility, Chris Lee and Angela Bilicio are here to discuss.
Thank you for having us back today for a second post-hearing session on zoning for accessibility. For today's post-hearing session, Angela and I will discuss considerations and recommendations on the proposed easement provisions. We are joined by Bob Haley and Winson Park from MTA's Transit Oriented Development Group and Howie Levine from MTA's Government and Community Relations Team. Who will be able to answer questions on MTA-related concerns. Can we go to the next one, please? The considerations that we will be covering today include those that we presented to you during the pre-hearing session on June twenty-first. As well as other testimonies that we've received since. Today, we will address four topics related to system-wide easement provisions. The first two items cover recommendations on applicability of the easement provision and considerations related to the application process requirement and timeline. Next slide, please. The last two items for today's discussion will cover comments that we've received. The last two items for today's discussion will cover comments that we've received on zoning relief and requirements for sites providing an easement and other considerations and requests to help improve the implementation of the process or of the proposal. And before I dive into the discussion, I'd like to note that our approach in responding to these comments focus on ways that could facilitate the review and approval of applications. Generally, we are proposing modifications to the easement provisions that would enable the timely processing of a significantly increased volume of applications under the proposal in a manner that would maintain the integrity of the easement review process without significant or unnecessary delay to affordable housing or other new development. And as with the last post-hearing session, feel free to jump in and ask any questions at any time. Next slide. On the applicability of the easement provisions, we received a recommendation to minimum lot size threshold from 5,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. The goal of zoning for accessibility is to create more opportunities for MTA to work with private developers to secure easements for future accessibility upgrades. We believe 5,000 square feet is an appropriate minimum lot size for this provision. We think a site of this size could accommodate an elevator without harming its developability. And we note that this is, this lot size is consistent with the 5,000-square-foot threshold that exists in other transit provisions like the subway stair relocation requirement. We also note that increasing the minimum lot size to 10,000 square feet would significantly reduce the number of applicable sites. And we believe this would compromise the goals of this proposal and therefore don't recommend any modifications to this aspect of the project. Next slide. We also received a recommendation to limit applicability to development sites within 50 feet of a mass transit station as opposed to the whole zoning lot. The concern is that on very large zoning lots, portions of a site that are not being developed that lie within 50 feet of a station would trigger the consultation process for the entire site. We believe that the zoning lot is the most appropriate parameter to base applicability on as opposed to the specific boundaries of a development site. This is consistent with how zoning regulations are applied today and as we discussed at the last review session, how the bonus would apply. We therefore recommend keeping zoning lot as the unit to base applicability on. That said, we acknowledge that locating an easement on any portion of the zoning lot where existing buildings would remain would not be practical. We therefore recommend modifying the text to clarify that an easement would be needed where it could provide a connection between the mass transit station and the portion of the zoning lot where new construction is occurring. Next slide. We also received a request to clarify the types of enlargements that would be subject to the easement provisions, specifically whether incidental constructions such as lobby renovation would trigger these provisions. As I mentioned, the goal of this proposal is to create more opportunities for facilitating accessibility improvements and securing easements where they could reasonably be accommodated. Under the proposed text, enlargements of all types that involve ground floor level construction would be subject to the easement provisions. While the proposal was looking to cast a wide net for possible easement locations, we agree that easement process, the easement process shouldn't be required for sites undertaking minimal ground floor renovations. As such, we recommend modifying the text to only apply to ground floor level enlargements, which is a more traditional standard in the zoning resolution. Next slide. We also received recommendations to exclude any project that is currently filed or approved for discretionary actions at the BSA or CPC or projects that were already at the Department of Buildings. While our goal with ZFA is to provide more opportunities for easements and new construction, we don't aim to negatively affect projects with approvals in hand or deepen the approval process. As such, we recommend a series of vesting provisions. Prior to date of enactment, sites with a building permit or working to get their permits prior to date of enactment would be exempted from the requirement. In addition, sites with a CPC special permit or authorization that was referred out by date of enactment would be exempted. This would also be true of BSA special permit or variance applications as well as LPC approvals. We also received a recommendation to exempt sites with existing easement requirements. Many existing easements are voluntary and can therefore be terminated by the owner at any point. In addition, they were often based on outdated design standards and agreements. We therefore believe that sites with existing easement agreements should continue to be subject to ZFA. That said, we would recommend exempting sites with existing easements created by other zoning provisions since these easements would have been permanent and subject to more recent design standards. Next slide. The second batch of comments relates to process and timeline for the easement certification itself. Next slide. First, we received comments on the timeline for initially determining whether an easement is needed. As proposed, this step of the process has a 60-day limit to allow the MTA and Chair of the City Planning Commission to make this determination. The testimonies that we've received ask that we reconsider the 60-day initial timeframe and to save time by making MTA the sole determinant for deciding whether or not an easement is needed. This concern was exacerbated for affordable housing projects. We note that this time limit was established to ensure that the MTA responds to applicants in a reasonable time period. Next slide. Upon further consultation with the MTA, we believe some modifications are warranted since in many instances, the MTA could make a determination fairly quickly. We therefore recommend that the initial determination be reduced from 60 days to 30 days and that this process only involve the MTA since they solely have the expertise to determine whether an easement is needed or possible. We believe this would make the process more seamless and expeditious and address any concerns about timing in this initial determination. Next slide. We also received comments on the review period if an easement is needed on a site. Today, this stage includes a consultation process between MTA, the owner and Chair of the City Planning Commission to determine the type and dimensions of the easement, a 45-day review and comment period for following the submission of a site plan to finalize the location of the easement, and the recordation of the dimensions, location, and easement agreement prior to proceeding to file at the Department of Buildings. In developing this process, we wanted to make sure that MTA feedback and approval is delivered in a timely fashion. The testimonies we received, however, highlighted some areas where more certainty was needed. For instance, the consultation process between the MTA Chair and the owner is not subject to a time limit and the execution and recordation of the easement agreement could take time and delay filing at DOB since it would be required before an owner can file for a building permit. Next slide. To address these concerns, we recommend the following modifications. In the first step, the text would require the MTA to recommend the type, dimensions, and general location of the easement within 30 days. We believe this would allow the applicant to advance to the next step of the process with more clarity and more quickly. After the owner submits the site plan based on this guidance, we would recommend there be a 30-day review period for the MTA to either approve or enumerate comments and a 15-day period for the MTA to verify whether such comments have been addressed. Once this is completed, the application would be certified and the owner could advance to DOB for permits. To limit the possibility of rework loops, we would also recommend allowing owners to proceed to file at DOB if MTA has reviewed a site plan for more than 120 days of total time with MTA. Finally, we would recommend allowing owners to complete the maintenance and operations, operation portions of the easement agreement after filing with DOB since these requirements would not alter the size and location of the easements. They would instead be required by temporary certificate of occupancy. So overall, we think these modifications would create more certainty over the general timeline and minimize the cycle of revisions that are needed while still ensuring the MTA the ability to obtain appropriate easements. Next slide. On a related topic, we also received a consideration to limit the size of easements so as to provide more predictability that the requested easement could be reasonably accommodated on sites. We note that the proposed text does not currently prescribe size limits for easements because we wanted to provide the MTA enough flexibility to determine the appropriate easement size given the wide variety of stations and accessibility needs. It also recognizes the MTA's ability to obtain easements of any size through their powers as a state agency. That said, we understand the concern that such open-ended flexibility could be a problem for property owners and as such, we would recommend adding into the easement provision a maximum linear frontage threshold of 25% at the ground floor street level. This would ensure that an appropriate volume for an elevator could be located on the smallest sites. If the MTA requests an easement larger than this, which may be acceptable to some property owners, the MTA would not be able to hold up the building permit process. We think this change would effectively balance the needs of property owners and the MTA. Next slide. And finally, a number of community boards have recommended that community boards should be notified and consulted on all applications and that major station improvements should be subject to community board review to ensure public input and transparency. As I mentioned, we are looking to create an expeditious process that would allow MTA to secure space for accessibility improvements but in a manner that would not delay overall construction schedules for projects next to transit stations. Given the concerns raised about overall timeline, our recommended modifications to the process aim to shorten and provide more clarity on how long it would take to get certified. While we understand the board's desire for information and input, we note introducing such a step in the process could add to the application timeline and create more uncertainty for applicants. We note that the easement process is meant to be a ministerial certification, which like most certifications in the zoning resolution would not be specifically referred to a community board. That said, like all applications at DCP, these applications would be available through our zoning application portal. As such, we don't recommend any changes here. And now I'm going to hand the presentation over to Angela. Thank you.
Thank you Chris. Good afternoon Commissioners. Next slide please. We also received a limited number of testimonies on zoning relief and requirements. One community board cited concerns over the provisions for allowing commercial use within 30 feet of an easement in residence districts. We believe that complementary uses such as local retail should be permitted around easement volumes as a way of enhancing the sidewalk environment where future station entrances could be located. We also note that in residence districts, transit entrances may not be compatible with more sensitive uses such as apartment units and other residential uses at the same level. We therefore don't recommend changes to this aspect of the proposal. We also received testimony regarding additional relief for affordable housing developments. The concern is that the programmatic needs for affordable housing developments are different than market rate housing and that there must be a dedicated set of relief to make an affordable housing project fully whole should it be compelled to comply with the easement provisions. As mentioned previously, the department supports all opportunities for creating more affordable housing. In developing this proposal, we wanted to ensure that supportive transit improvements does not come at the expense of affordable housing projects. We note that much of the concerns we heard from affordable housing groups emphasized the unique timing issues that affordable housing projects face and the need to ensure that proposed easement process would not cause potential delays in the pre-development schedule. As discussed previously, we've recommended a series of improvements to the easement process that we believe would provide more certainty over the application timeline which would address the challenges inherent to affordable housing projects. We were also asked to reconsider allowing temporary uses within easement volumes as permitted obstructions in open areas on the zoning lot. A community board raised concerns about compatibility of such temporary uses in open areas with the surrounding neighborhood. We think this allowance is appropriate since the activity generated by transit entrance would be equal to or greater than the activity that would be generated by the small retail establishments that would be permitted as temporary uses. That said, we also note that such construction would be unlikely given the MTA could retake the easement within a short time period. We therefore don't recommend making any modifications to this provision. Next slide please. As part of the proposal, temporary uses would be permitted within easement volume until such time as the MTA is ready to build out the improvement. As referred out, the transit agency would be required to give at least six months notice in advance for the easement space to be vacated. During the public review process, we heard a recommendation that this time period be increased to give more certainty for temporary tenants when leasing these spaces. We note that the proposed temporary use provisions are intended to promote viable interim uses before an improvement is ready to be constructed. We believe that such uses would help activate street frontage and allow owners to utilize the space in a meaningful way during this period. While a minimum notice of six months is consistent with existing easement provisions, we agree that this timeline may impose uncertainty and result in limited interim use. We therefore recommend the minimum notice be increased to 12 months so as to provide more certainty while ensuring the MTA can improve easements in an appropriate timeframe. Next slide please. A community board cited concerns about the provision of easements at the expense of prime development space and general concerns about construction cost. We believe that the zoning relief offered in the proposal would offset the burdens of an easement and allow lost floor space to be accommodated elsewhere on the site. As you may recall, this includes floor area exemptions as well as height and parking relief that were based on effects of easement could have on a site. That said, while the proposal was predominantly focused on providing zoning relief, it did come with one new zoning requirement that limits curb cuts within 30 feet of easements. We note that during the public review process, it was brought to our attention that such a requirement may be overly restrictive and that the goal of ensuring that curb cuts are safely located where easements are provided can be accomplished without such a provision. As such, we would recommend removing this requirement as it could make it difficult for the MTA to require easements on sites where parking or loading are desired. The MTA will work with property owners to ensure that any curb cuts do not interfere with the needs of the easement while maintaining pedestrian safety. Next slide please. One community board asked for clarification on how easement and density bonus provisions would work together and whether height increases could be stacked. We note that the two components of this proposal are intended to work in tandem to secure easements and where applicable, support the delivery of transit improvements. We believe that where both provisions would apply, both height relief from the easement provision and the authorization would be needed. The easement height relief is needed to accommodate the easement itself while the authorization would be needed to accommodate the additional floor area generated through the bonus. Making this change would put sites providing onsite transit improvements at disadvantage and we don't think this is appropriate. Therefore, we do not believe changes are necessary here. However, we did find one area where further clarification is warranted. The easement text includes a process if property owners want to build out the infrastructure in the easements themselves. And it was unclear whether this process applied to sites undertaking the bonus where separate timelines and processes also apply. To address this confusion, we would recommend stating that the bonus provisions control for sites that are undertaking the bonus as they are more appropriate for improvement projects. Next slide please. The last item relates to other considerations and requests we receive to help improve the implementation of this proposal. Two advocacy groups proposed that the MTA establish a department to provide a dedicated point of contact for all affordable housing projects because these projects have unique timing challenges such as obtaining tax credits. While we recognize these projects face unique time constraints, we believe the recommended modifications to the overall application process that we went through earlier would ensure that affordable housing projects are not affected by the proposal. By shortening the overall timeline and inserting greater clarity in the expected review timeframe, we believe these modifications would provide more certainty over schedule and address the unique challenges inherent to affordable housing projects. We also note that the MTA already works with all property owners through their Transit Oriented Development Group. This TOD group works closely with HPD on affordable housing projects next to transit stations. This group will also be the lead in coordinating MTA review of developer applications for easement applicability moving forward. To support this work, in the last year, the MTA has created an online portal to expedite reviews of all developer applications. ZFA-related developer applications will also be submitted through this portal. Next slide please. And finally, we received a few comments regarding transparency around applicability, easements, and station improvements. It was proposed that affected tax lots should be shared with DOB and posted in a publicly available manner. Also, that the MTA should identify and make available accessibility baron stations and pre-identify improvements in sites for easements when at all possible. It was proposed that the MTA create an interactive map or database that identifies all certified easement volume locations. And finally, we received a suggestion that easements be tied to the MTA's capital cycle or that the MTA provide a timeframe for improving easement spaces. In response to these comments, we note that the ZFA project webpage currently includes maps to outline the area of easement applicability surrounding transit stations and identify all non-accessible stations. To facilitate the implementation of this proposal, all applicable tax lots are shown on these maps would be shared with the DOB if the proposal is adopted. And finally, the MTA is open to providing materials that identify where easement volumes have been provided, including self-reporting easements that are unused to ensure that the public can know that the MTA is developing these easements. So that concludes our proposal for today. We'd like to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much for your time.
I want to again note that this proposal grew out of a collaboration among the MTA, the city council staff, and the department. And obviously, we worked to put together the best initial proposal that we can but this is a testament, the changes that we're proposing are a testament to the public review process with recommendations coming in from community boards, from advocacy organizations, from owners of real estate. And apologies for how wonky the changes are but these were very, very useful suggestions for changes to the zoning text to, one, make it more light. suggestions for changes to the zoning text to, uh, one, make it more likely that it's taken advantage of because we saw that the old text was rarely and to make it more user-friendly, and we especially appreciate our colleagues at the MTA and the work that they've done with us to put in place reasonable timelines that give landowners comfort that they won't be lost in an endless do-loop. Questions? Commissioner Ramprasad.
Yeah, and at the very beginning, when this was first introduced, I did mention about the sixty days. I mean, in this industry, forever, that's like, it really can hurt a project, so I'm glad to see that. So we see it came back and reduces down to thirty days. The one thing I'm curious about was the applicability of the maps. I know it says it will be shared with DOB. Will the public be able to view these same maps in some kind of portal?
Hi, yes, thank you for the, thank you for the question. Um, in the, in the creation of this proposal, we put together a ZFA webpage through the, hosted by the DCP webpage, and they are, they're, through the, the public review process, we do have maps already up that show the easement applicability around every station in the city.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Cirillo.
So first, let me just acknowledge the, the work and the modifications that have been presented today. And, and the presentation, particularly the speed of it. So some of this, I, I may have gone past me a little quickly, but I'll, I'll go back and, and review. But I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, in, in different neighborhoods and, and different sites and site characteristics obviously have completely different ways of having to analyze a program like this. But when I think about it through the eyes of, of Staten Island, where at least with respect to the Staten Island Railroad, there, there are no new, there are no new stops being constructed. This, this is about how we access the system in the places where people would need to access stations. And, and what we do know, and I certainly know this in, in Midtown East, that there are opportunities to create new access points to the stations. That, that's not really part of this project for Staten Island. We have the one railroad. It has its stops and it has platforms that are only so long and can only be accessed from certain places. And when you look at those stops today, there is not one I can think of that the MTA, if it had the wherewithal, couldn't construct elevators or other accessible access points to those stops. And they could do it in the public realm, not on anyone's private property. And that could be done now, whether it's an elevator to the sidewalk, whether it's, you know, uh, some other, whatever the mechanism is that even the future may not even see today. And so the idea of imposing this on, on a site that a private owner would need to then manage the, both the, the burden and the uncertainty, even though we're creating as much certainty as we can in this, but at the end of the day, the MTA may never exercise the easement right, even though they say at the beginning that they want to, is still a big issue. And the zoning relief that could potentially be provided if there is a site where the MTA exercises its right to have the easement exist, uh, is potentially one, especially in this, in the lower density districts of what, um, what this proposal embraces, could still be completely out of context to the surrounding neighborhood. And so there's still a great deal of concern, not that the, the goals and the mission, and in some respects, even the process provides, but in the impacts it could have since all of our communities are very different. And, uh, and again, I would suggest that there are lots of other ways that the MTA can be providing ADA accessible access, particularly in, in a borough like Staten Island, without imposing something on private ownership. It, it could be done tomorrow if they wanted to do it tomorrow. So anyway, I, it's really, I, I, I don't know if there's a, a point of view about that that the staff could share or something that would alleviate those concerns, particularly about the, the zoning relief that could come to, um, to a site owner that is engaged in this process, but I, I just put that out there. Thank you.
Angela or Chris or Frank, would you like to address it?
Uh, yeah, I think, thank you, Commissioner, for, for your comment and your concern. Uh, I, I do want to point out that, you know, the applicability is a fifty-foot radius around mass transit stations. And, you know, as, as we were going through the public review process and hearing out, you know, different concerns about, you know, timeline, we were really thinking about reducing the initial determination phase from sixty to thirty days because as I mentioned in the presentation, you know, there, there may be situations particularly in Staten Island where a determination can be made fairly quickly, where, you know, it's, it's unreasonable to have an easement on, on, on a site that is, you know, just, just within the cusp of fifty feet. I, I do also want to note that the applicability for this easement provision starts at our five districts and above. And we're very cognizant of, you know, the, the specific, you know, characteristics of some of the lower density districts. And it is not our intention or purpose through zoning for accessibility to create out of, you know, out of scale buildings.
I appreciate that, and I, I didn't say that. I do recognize the applicability at our five, but thank you for, uh, for, for saying it. I, I didn't say that in my remarks, but I am aware of it. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think that's the fundamental distinction of recognizing that the R1s through R4s would pose just the kinds of challenges that you identified. Commissioner Cirillo. Oh, Commissioner Kelly, you know, you missed, you missed, you missed a meeting and I forget that your face.
Oh, well, um, I'm much more optimistic about this approach than I am about what Commissioner Cirillo pines for. Having served for eight years, uh, on the MTA and having been a, a big advocate for, uh, access for the disabled community and having sat on the Capitol Construction Committee, which essentially determines what projects get built and not. I'm not sure the MTA will, will do more than a tiny portion of projects unless there is some other mechanism to help them get there because the, the fights for dollars in that committee and in, on that board are just frustrating.
I, can I just, just to say, I, I don't, I certainly was not optimistic that there was a better way to do this. I was concerned about the potential impacts. And I, I say that knowing as spending my, my day in, in Midtown East and around Grand Central, how, how effective linking development to transit improvements can be since it's the basis of the Midtown East rezoning, which is already proven to be amazingly successful and effective. So I,
And I'll put in a plug if anyone has not yet looked at the transit improvements constructed in connection with One Vanderbilt. They are transformational.
They're amazing. They're amazing.
For example, the Staten Island rail lot, you can't even get, because of the cost of the machines, uh, token machine, the metro card machines, uh, on the, uh, at the sites. So, you know, the MTA cries poverty over that, so, you know, you gotta go buy them in a store.
I wasn't aware of that. Okay, so we will be drafting up a report with these changes incorporated in it. Thank you, Angela. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. Last, but certainly not least, the citywide hotels is, is on, on our agenda. Jen, are you on the call? I lost internet access. I can't see who's there.
Yeah, yes, I'm here.
Okay. So my understanding is that, that we are here to, to take some questions. Jen had just, just an update. Go ahead.
We're going to be discussing this at a number of different review sessions, but Jen was going to do an initial laying out of the buckets of comments that were received.
Sure.
Sure, we, we did have a brief deck, which I, I think would be helpful just to, to guide the discussion. I think we can probably skip through the reminders of the proposal unless the commission.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. I, I think it's probably okay to skip ahead to the, given, given the time, to skip ahead to the sixth slide, which categorizes our, our proposals. There we go, okay. So first off, I want to thank you all for having me today and good evening, I suppose, at this point. I'm Jennifer Gravel. I'm the Director of Housing and Economic Development here at City Planning. We heard a lot of testimony at the public hearing, both in favor and opposed to the proposed special permit. And we'll have the opportunity at future review sessions to share more detail. But I wanted to summarize what we see as the general categories of comments today, respond to some, some of those comments and, and identify those issues that we think require some more consideration for discussion with the commission at a later date. So we hope, thought it helpful to bucket them into three general categories. The first being those questions that really revolve around the market analysis and the assumptions in the DEIS, the proposal's land use rationale and findings for the special permit, and finally, any potential modifications that were recommended in testimony. And next slide, please. So for the, the comments around the market analysis and the assumptions. So, so there were several comments and much testimony to the effect that the assumptions in the market analysis were both, on the one hand, too conservative and yet, on the other hand, not conservative enough. There were supporters of the proposal that said the market analysis was overly optimistic in assuming that visitation and business visitation in particular would return to pre-pandemic levels, thus overstating the potential socioeconomic impacts of the action. So the pandemic obviously had a big effect on the city's tourism industry and the analysis in the DEIS was based on the best available information at the time. Yet even in a pre-pandemic environment, however, there is always uncertainty. And for this reason, as we always do, we made a conservative assumption that visitation would return to pre-COVID levels over time. Recent, recent information on visitation and hotel occupancy is heartening and better than anticipated, indicating that our assumptions were also reasonable. The city has gained over twenty-four thousand rooms due to the reopening of closed hotels. And most recent occupancy statistics from New York City and Company show that occupancy hovers around sixty-five percent. Although this is much lower than the eighty-three percent average occupancy that existed prior to the pandemic, it is a vast improvement over the forty percent occupancy rate that we saw in September of 2020. The market assessment will be updated in the FEIS based on new information, including any industry insights or analyst projections we may be able to find that can inform changing trends, such as the long-term effects on, on things like business travel. However, it's also worth noting with regard to business travel that it comprised only twenty-one percent of total visitation prior to the pandemic and that the analysis will still need to be conservative. Similarly, on the other hand, critics of the proposal, primarily those in the residential, in the real estate community, said that the socioeconomic assessment downplayed the economic impacts of the proposal because the analysis did not consider economic effects of foregone tax revenue and economic activity related to new construction. So the fiscal impacts related to tax revenues or construction activity are not a land use consideration or a secret issue. Although there are certainly costs associated with constraining hotel development, it's important to recognize that the analysis was not prepared, prepared to assess fiscal or economic impacts. Environmental reviews are intended only to look at the potential adverse environmental effects of the proposed action. Although the socioeconomic analysis did include certain economic considerations, such as hotel industry employment and tourist spending, this was as a means of contextualizing the scope of the room loss to assess the effect on the industry. A hotel developer that testified at the hearing, who was opposed to the proposal, said that it would, that the proposal would cause a shift to Airbnb that needs to be evaluated. The DEIS does project a modest increase in legal Airbnb use as well as an increase of visitors staying with friends and family. We do not expect a large shift to Airbnb, given constraints for expanding that industry in the city and ongoing enforcement of regulations that limit their ability to grow. At the public hearing and in the community board review process, we heard concerns that the exemption for homeless shelters from the special permit would cause an increase in shelter citywide. This is a misunderstanding of the proposal. Since we expect few new commercial hotels over time as a result of the action, we expect fewer new commercial hotels over time as a result of the action, there will be less of an incentive, not more, for commercial hotels to contract with the city or other providers to provide emergency shelter. Moreover, since the exemption, the exemption does not create, moreover, the exemption does not create a loophole for either shelters or hotels, since new as-of-right shelters would be required to obtain a special permit if they choose to convert to a commercial hotel at a later date. Separating the regime that regulates commercial hotels from the citing of shelters will result in purpose-built facilities for shelters in better locations, less distorted by the locational preferences of commercial hotels. The exemption simply retains the as-of-right option for use group five transient hotels, transient accommodations for shelters, along with use group three, three community facilities and use group two apartments. This maintains flexibility for the city and nonprofit providers of emergency shelters to operate most efficiently, efficiently, affordably and appropriately shelter a population with very diverse needs. We also heard testimony from supporters saying that the proposal would not be a deterrent to new hotel development and from opponents saying that it would be a deterrent to new hotel development. The DEIS reflects the expectation that visitation will recover and grow and is necessarily conservative to assess the potential effects of the proposed action. It also assumes that the recovery provisions, which include special, special vesting rules and relaxed discontinuous regulations, will allow the inventory to recover to pre-COVID levels by the build year, which include an additional twenty-five thousand new rooms by 2028 from hotels in the vested development pipeline. For this reason, even though we project a future inventory sufficient to support past record visitation, we are still assuming a shortfall of approximately forty-seven thousand rooms with respect to increased future demand. We expect demand for hotels in the city to be high enough for some hotel operators to pursue the special permit, but also expect that new hotel development will decline overall as a result of the proposal when compared to the no-action condition. And I also want to correct a misstatement at the, at the hearing that the proposal would only apply to large hotels. The proposed special permit would apply to hotels of any size. So accordingly, we anticipate a decline in new hotel, hotel development over the no-action condition. And this is analyzed in the DEIS. And related to the amount of hotels that we expect to come through the process, there was a question raised by the commission at referral regarding the department's capacity to process an influx of hotel special permit applications. As described in the DEIS, we estimated approximately ten applications a year. And this was based on our, our history of, of other actions that facilitated new hotels. So our active pipeline hovers around approximately two, I think, two-hundred-and-seventy applications a year. So if our estimate, if these estimates are correct, we think the agency can absorb this number without radical changes to our staffing. And finally, so the last sort of category of comments that we heard on, on the market assessment were really questions about the timing of the proposal, given the impacts in the pandemic. Now, the idea of requiring site-specific review of hotels has been in discussion for many years, and the administration aired this proposal prior to the pandemic. and the administration aired this proposal prior to the pandemic. In response to the pandemic and the severe effects it had on the industry, the proposal already includes provisions intended to enable the supply of rooms to return to pre-pandemic levels over time. However, we intend to address this question in greater depth at a follow-up review session as we learn more about the current state of the industry from our updated market assessment. Next slide, please. The next category of, of, of comments at the hearing really relate to the land use rationale and questions mostly around the findings. Now, we heard testimony from several opponents and commissioners, um, concerned that there is no land, land use rationale for the proposed action. While some may not support or agree with the land use rationale, it is quite simply that hotels are a unique use with characteristics of both residential and commercial uses. And while hotels are appropriate and desired in districts that are residential, commercial, or like industrial in character, and they are developed at the pace and in the varied contexts that we've seen in recent years, a new hotel can conflict with adjacent uses or affect the future development of surrounding area in ways that are undesirable. Site-specific review will allow that development, will ensure that that development doesn't introduce new conflicts or otherwise impair the future use of development of a surrounding area.
Jen, do you prefer to take questions on a slide-by-slide basis or on the entirety?
Um, I am happy to do it either way. It makes sense to do it on slide.
How, how many more slides do you have?
Just one more after this, and it's a brief one.
Okay. So why don't you go through that? I'll note that Commissioner Edie is leaving now, so we are down to a quorum. We are the hardcore.
Okay. Um, I will try, I'm almost there. Um, I do want to, so just, as it relates to the land use rationale, I do want to reiterate that the department does consider this use to be unique. As-of-right development use flexibility are important to the city's capacity to provide enough housing and space for a wide range of uses to meet its needs. And while certain uses in zoning do require special permits, requiring group discretionary review always involves a trade-off between the benefits of reviewing individual projects and the potential for space to be supplied less quickly. So this proposal really suggests the unique characteristics of transient accommodations, which have the characteristics of both residential and commercial uses, um, and warrants review in a way that may not be necessary for other uses. And related, just two more points related to the findings. We heard a request, a very specific request, that we maintain the findings for some of the existing hotel special permits. This proposal really aims to create a consistent and predictable regime for new commercial hotels, and we believe that the proposed general finding is appropriate citywide. The exception, however, is in the, um, M1 districts, which has additional findings that were recently adopted and intended to address issues specific to industrial areas, and those findings are retained in the current proposal. Finally, at, at the hearing at the community board meetings, we heard requests that the findings be more specific to guide decision-makers. Under the proposals, hotels will be allowed in a wide range of neighborhood contexts where we expect different considerations to be relevant. And in drafting the findings, we really wanted to allow sufficient flexibility for the commission to consider the surrounding context, as well as a future vision for an area which may differ from the current condition. Now, that said, we're looking to how we can sharpen the language, either in the text or the CPC report, to provide some additional guidance. And we intend to address this question in greater detail at a future review session. And next slide, please.
We're actually already on the next.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Um, and finally, the last three items are really all to be addressed at a, a later review session because they really require some additional consideration and analysis. Uh, and these were specific proposals that were raised to, uh, to modify the proposal, that it should only apply to large hotels, that there should be a sunset clause, and that we should exclude, uh, business districts, in particular, the Manhattan City and downtown Brooklyn. With that, I'm, uh, thank you for your time. I hope that wasn't too rushed, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you for your patience, Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you. Um, I just noted, and I wasn't sure if it was here or, or you're gonna tackle this later, but, you know, there were a number of comments about the fiscal impact and, and the, you know, tax, uh, the loss of tax revenue, um, that came up. And, you know, I don't want to, uh, I, I do think they belong somewhere in terms of a recognition that, uh, multiple, uh, reports came, have come out, um, showing that impact.
Yeah, Jen, do you want to reiterate what you had said, but it may have been covered too quickly?
Yeah, yeah. So yes, we did, we did, uh, did acknowledge that, um, that there was quite a bit of testimony at the hearing related to those fiscal impacts, both the, uh, tax revenues and, and construction activity. Although those are important, they're not a land use issue or a seeker issue, and, and we know that there are costs associated with constraining hotel development, and the DEIS did look into that. But it's important to recognize that the analysis was, uh, not prepared to, to assess fiscal or economic impacts.
No, I, I understand that. I, I heard, I just, you know, this is a public record. This presentation is a public record of, of comments. And so I just felt it was important to, you know, note that in the documentation that's produced, that summarizes for the record the issues that people had.
No, certainly. We, as you know, we comprehensively go through the comments that were made, bucket them, and whether they are land use or not, we certainly will note that. Yes, Commissioner Dweck.
Just, um, to follow up on Commissioner Ortiz's comment. Uh, I noted that we will be taking, Jennifer said we'll be taking it up at a future review session, but a sunset clause would mitigate any economic impacts as identified.
Maybe I should call you Commissioner Capelli now.
I gotta call her. Um, thank you. I, I, first of all, Jennifer, thank you for the, for the updating for summarizing the issues that, that came up during the hearing. So, so one thing that, that it was not in this presentation, but it did come up, and, and I'm not sure where, if at all, it has been analyzed, but there, the issue of, and this goes to the market analysis and sort of assumptions about the impact this has on a developer to get financing when, when they go to attempt to get financing, and this is going to be, at a minimum, a year-long process in, in ULP alone, never mind the uncertainty of whether or not it would be approved, even through the process at, at its most expedited form. So that's, that's really missing, um, here, and, and I think that that's a really critical element of, of looking at this, you know, in terms of, of the analysis that's being done. I, I, I also, I would like to say that I think it's imperative that the findings are a little more specific, because when you read what the findings are, I mean, there's, there's so much, so much flexibility, you could go whichever way you want. It is really, it's so discretionary in the findings. There's nothing technical about the findings. Um, and I think that's a dangerous, uh, r- road to go down. I also think that it's somewhat dangerous, all with a little D, that we are still, and, and I know we, we all can disagree on, on sort of the land use rationale here, but I, I, I don't, I don't accept it or believe it. I think that's clear at this point. But the idea that the basis of the land use rationale is that this hotels are a unique use in a neighborhood, when, when they're part of, I mean, and I'm not suggesting that they aren't different than a one-family house or they aren't different from a gas station, and we know what we've done to storage facilities. Everything we want to have a land use rationale to change can't just be hooked into it has a unique use. Because I think that's a, that's a precedent for every single thing that a community or we don't like or want to control more will just be defined as a unique use. And, um, that still, it really isn't a land use rationale. It's just more of about a characteristic of something. And, and we have use groups that have multiple variety of uses that are all different from each other, that all fit into the same category. So anyway, I, I share that because it's still really problematic. I, I, you know, I, I'll look forward to the next follow, post-hearing follow-up. But, um, I'm not sure that, I'm, I'm convinced today, in this post-hearing follow-up, that what I thought at the hearing, eh, had, you know, I'm, I'm not any more confident today than I was then that this is really the right way we should be moving. And again, particularly at this time, but perhaps ever. But we'll, we'll see where the next post-hearing follow-up goes. Thank you.
A couple of things, Commissioner. One is to make it clear that we're focusing on the impacts, the unique impacts, the specific impacts, not a unique use. Because I agree with you that unique use, every use can be defined as unique. And I want to thank you for the comments here. We knew that this was a quick turnaround time and that we will be returning again. We wanted to just put our initial thought on there. We are continuing to do the analysis. And so, um, with any luck, Ryan, we'll have more time, um, at the next review session. But even though it's a very long meeting, did want to do just a very first pass at putting the comments into buckets.
And, and while we have Jen on the, the phone, I just wanted to, in light of the, the question around the Slaughterhouse Hotel, the hotel proposed there. So that was certified prior to this, this referral, so it would, it would qualify for the vesting. Um, and, and, uh, they would have to complete construction within six years of the adoption of the text. So there's a chance that they could get adopted before the text and, and it would be based on the text.
Thanks for clarifying that, Jen and Ryan. And with that,
That concludes our review session for, uh,
Thank you.
Monday, July 26th. The time is 5:38 PM.
And I'll see you for another long one on Wednesday. And then Thursday.